The City of San Clemente respects the many people of different faiths who reside here. The City Council historically begins its session with an invocation offered by one of the religious leaders of our community with full appreciation of our shared belief that we are one nation under God. And while the city cannot endorse any particular religion, we respect the religious freedom and freedom of expression of all our citizens to pray as they feel led to pray. This evening's invocation will be given by Pastor Roger Gales of Heritage Christian Fellowship.
Please stand.
First of all, thank you all for your leadership and for serving our city. I'm grateful. And happy Saint Patrick's Day. Father, we know that all blessings come from you, and we are blessed. We're blessed to live in the city, work in the city, and we're grateful for all of those blessings. Lord, thank you for these leaders and their service to our city. God, we pray that you would give them wisdom in all of their decision-making. We pray that you would give them courage to do what's right in all circumstances, Lord, regardless of how difficult that is. And Father, we pray your continued blessing on our city, our government, our industry, our schools, our families, our homes, in every aspect. God, we pray your blessing, and we thank you in Jesus' name. Amen.
Please remain standing for Pledge Allegiance. Boys, if you could join me up here at the podium. Come on over here, guys. You guys ready? Okay. Put your way.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, before you guys take off, tell me your names. You guys can be seated.
I'm Daniel Grace.
I'm Zach Wilson.
I'm Jack Proctor.
I'm Josh Smith.
And I'm Bryce Smith.
And what are you guys here for?
A city council meeting.
Okay, thank you, guys. Big handshakes, big handshakes. Come on, there you go. There you go. You can do a redo it then here. Second chance. There you go. Good job. Thank you, guys.
Here.
Councilmember Don Chak.
Present.
Councilmember Ward.
Yes.
Mayor Potem Baker.
Here.
Mayor Hamm.
Here.
First item on the agenda is presentation by San Clemente High School students McKenna Brownell and Daniel Clevert concerning campus activities.
Hello again. I'm McKenna. Daniel's not here today. He has rehearsal for Bye Bye Birdie, which is coming up, so I'll be presenting for him. So let's look at San Clemente in March. Right now, we have our March Madness Dodgeball Tournament going on. It's a bracket of 32 teams. It's like styled after the March Madness of basketball right now, and it lasts three weeks, and it's single elimination, and it's really fun. It's mostly boys that participate and like to throw things at each other really hard. But yeah, it gets really, the crowd going and everything. It's a fun event. We have our musical coming up. Opening night is this week, Bye Bye Birdie. Those are the dates listed on the screen, and judges will be coming to observe the show and deciding if they will receive any statewide competition awards, which is very cool. Recently, the IBAP Environmental Field Trip went to their annual Yosemite trip and with their fabulous teacher, Ms. Kerr, who has been going for, I think, 14 years now. And they stayed at two different locations. They learned about the biomes, put their, like, learning to good use. I heard it was very fun and amazing for everyone. We have a club on campus called SOS, which is Save Our Students, that promotes activities unrelated to, like, partying and et cetera. So they put on an event called Bubble Soccer, and it was a fundraiser for the girls soccer program. And I think, like, 50 kids or something showed up, and they played bubble soccer, as you can see. Our boys volleyball and other sports are in season right now. Boys volleyball is doing really well. They just won a really respected tournament. They went 5-0, and they won the title of all team, or all tournament team. And swim and track are just about to start their seasons, and our dance team is going to compete at Nationals this week. Let's hope they bring home really nice titles.
Baseball.
Oh, and baseball is starting too. I forgot about that. Thank you. As most of you probably know, we had a bomb threat lockdown on March 4th, and it happened around 1:45 PM. Students were instructed to stay inside their fifth-period classrooms, and we were finally released at 4:00 PM. It was put in place because of an anonymous call that said that there were pipe bombs throughout San Clemente, and I believe 13 other schools in the district went into lockdown. It was, it went really smooth, actually. A lot of people knew what to do. Like, this is the third one we've had in the past four years, unfortunately, but it was very calm. Students were very well-prepared, so were teachers. And it was, it was always a bonding experience, I mean, to be locked in with 100 other kids in one classroom, so that's it. And I have some Bye Bye Birdie bookmarks for UCF council members because of the play that is opening this week, so I will see you next month.
Thank you very much.
Next is presentation of a certificate of recognition to Jay Merrifield.
We're gonna have Tim do the presentation since he knows the individual personally.
So now, is this on? Hello, hello, hello. There we go. Come on up, Jay. Right here, brother. All right. So I was pleased to see and to recognize Jay. I was receiving this award. Jay has the very special pleasure of being married to my wife's cousin.
That's right.
So his family, and so I was really pleased to see this. And what we're doing tonight is presenting him a certificate of recognition in honor and in gratitude and recognition for his heroism that saved the life of a potential drowning victim at San Clemente State Beach on Valentine's Day, 2015. Now, I'd love for you to tell us a little bit about that day and what you saw and what you did, just so folks can get some context. Would you mind taking a few minutes?
Sure, yeah. Well, to be honest, it was all about my wife. If my wife hadn't saw this guy, I wouldn't have dug, did what I did. I just got done surfing for probably two or three hours down from State Beach, so it was actually nowhere near where this guy was swimming. And it turns out he was a Marine, but I came, I came back up about two, two hours of surfing myself and put down all my stuff, went up all the way to where the train tracks are and the rocks and pretty far away from the water. I put down all my stuff, and you know, I'm starting to change out of my wetsuit, and all of a sudden I, and I heard a sound, and it sounded like a seal, to be honest. I mean, it sounded like a bark. It was so, it was like a loud bark, which sounds like a seal. And my wife goes, "Jay, do you see that seal?" I'm like, you know, we see seals all the time. Anyways, long story short, two minutes go by, and then all of a sudden she goes, "That's a man. That's a man drowning." That's all I heard was drowning, and I think to my three-year-old. And so I look over to the water, sun's going down, so you could barely see the water. That's why no one was doing anything. I mean, we were like, it was right in front of everyone. And sure enough, I see these hands come up out of the water and then go back under, and he would stay under for probably 15, 20 seconds at a time. I mean, he wasn't just going like this. He was underwater. And so I dropped everything and swam out there, thinking for sure I'd have like 20 other people coming with me, and that's why I did, so I swim in, I'm swimming, I'm thinking, someone's gonna get to him first, and then I realized, there's no one behind me. Anyways, and I keep swimming, and sure enough, he was underwater by the time I got there. I mean, this guy would've died for sure. And I went under and then came back up, and he almost drowned me too, and it was not easy to get him in, but he's in and he's alive, so that's good. So, that's great.
Tim, before you present that, you wanna call up the rep from State Lifeguards as well?
Absolutely, of course, yeah. Who, oh, come on up, sir, please. All right, good. So, did you have anything you wanna say at all, or?
We just wanted to thank Jay for his heroics on that day. We haven't had a drowning at our beach in probably in at least 13 years that I've been there, and if it wasn't for Jay and his actions, we would've had one on the 14th, so.
That's great.
Thank you, Jay, so much.
Well, good. I'm glad you can have you here, because we wanna present you the certificate of recognition from the City of San Clemente for a job well done, signed by Chris. And then also from the California Legislature, signed by William Bro, our representative here. Thank you for your good work. Thanks for doing this. And sure enough, I didn't even know about it until we heard about the presentation tonight, so I think it's great, and frankly, we, he owes you debt of gratitude, and so do we as a community. Thanks, man. Appreciate it.
And Jay, one thing from my, from my little bit of knowledge about, from junior lifeguards and being around those guys a little bit, please take a flotation device with you next time you do that. Thank you. Please, if anybody's gonna do it, please take a flotation device with you, 'cause, okay, thank you.
Next is a presentation by Transportation Engineering Manager, Tom Frank, concerning modern roundabout education and outreach.
Roundabout education, Tom?
That's right.
This is the most exciting thing we're gonna talk about tonight.
It is. It doesn't top the last presentation, but I'm gonna give it our best. Good evening, City Council.
Tom, how many roundabouts do we have in town right now?
Right now, unfortunate, well, right now, zero.
Oh, zero? That one that we have doesn't even count? Doesn't qualify?
It doesn't. Actually, as part, I was gonna mention that, but that's considered a traffic circle because modern roundabout includes splinter islands, which facilitate the pedestrian users of that intersection.
Okay, well, let's hear all about them.
All right, you bet. So I'm gonna start off giving you a little context on why we're presenting this tonight, and then the presentation, or Jennifer Rosales will complete the presentation. As you know, Avenue de La Pata and Camino del Rio are well under construction, and in fact, that project is going to be complete by the end of next year, so by the end of 2016. To prepare for the gap closure of Camino del Rio, the city is undertaking and initiating intersection control studies to determine what is needed at specific intersections, and we're specifically looking at the intersections of Camino del Rio and Cerro Motoso, and Camino del Rio, and Camino de los Morros. Including roundabouts and intersection control studies is, is common practice now. Actually, it's a part of our updated general plan, and it also conforms with the policies of the Federal Highway Administration and Caltrans. My perspective on roundabouts is they work very well in the right application, which includes gaining the support of the surrounding community, in fact, the entire city. You may be familiar with modern-day roundabouts, which are prevalent in some of the nearby communities. They're the prevalent intersection control in Ladera Ranch up in Mission Viejo. There's also a two-lane roundabout west of the intersect, interchange of 405 and Laguna Canyon and Shady Canyon exits. So we figured since there is no roundabouts in town, the first step in introducing them to the city is through a public education and outreach effort, and so this is a part of that. Following this meeting, we will be scheduling public workshops to present the upcoming intersection control evaluations to the Del Rio community, and of course, those are public workshops, and we encourage all of the public to attend those. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Jennifer Rosales, our Senior Transportation Engineer.
Thank you. Hi, I'm Jennifer Rosales, Senior Transportation Engineer, and we've put together this short video for you. FHWA put together a longer version of it, and we've reduced it, and we added a public involvement piece at the end from the City of Carlsbad. I also have materials here, which I will pass out after the video, which includes the longer version from, of the video from FHWA, as well as material from ARP, which will be highlighted in the video as well. So with that, let's go ahead and play the video. Thank you.
Did you know that more than 20 people are killed and many more are seriously injured in crashes at intersections every day in the United States? Did you know that most of these deaths and injuries are due to right-angle crashes that occur at signalized and stop-controlled intersections? How much time do you spend stopped at a red light waiting for the light? Did you know that more than 20 people are killed and many more are seriously injured in crashes at intersections every day in the United States? Did you know that most of these deaths and injuries are due to right-angle crashes that occur at signalized and stop-controlled intersections?
Watch this when we have the audio, so why don't we just delay this until a future council meeting? Okay.
Houses aren't gonna get built tomorrow?
They're not.
Dang. Okay. Okay, thanks, Tom. Thanks, Jen. Oh, yeah, okay. Figured as much. Yeah.
Members of the audience who wish to address council on matters that are within the jurisdiction of the City of San Clemente but not separately listed on the agenda, may do so during the oral communications portion of the meeting. A total time limitation of 30 minutes is allocated for Oral Communications Part One, with each speaker being allotted three minutes in which to give his or her presentation.
Not too bad. Okay, the first one is Wayne Agelston, Tom Barnes, and then Vonnie Barnes. Did I pronounce that right? Agelston?
Yes.
Perfect.
Talk about roundabouts. I grew up in a city, a small town called Towmeach, Ohio, and it had a roundabout in the middle of it, and in the middle was a New England-style church built in 1832 and a town hall built in 1834, and surrounding the circle were eight roads that were radiating out from it. It's a zoo, believe me, to try to navigate that. I'm here this evening to talk about North Beach. North Beach has languished for too long, and it's one of the most important areas here in San Clemente. I understand the council has made it a mid-level priority. It really needs to be a top priority here in San Clemente. I have, and why should we make it a top priority? We need to get ahead of the curve. The curve is Marblehead. Marblehead is gonna have over 300 homes, ranging in price from $1 million to over $3 million plus the outlet center, which is gonna become an economic engine for San Clemente. And many people are gonna find their way down to North Beach. I have two suggestions this evening to make North Beach a priority. We've, number one, we've been looking for a spot for an event area in North Beach. We've talked about, you folks have talked about the parking lot and El Camino Real. We've talked about the Triangle area. I have another suggestion, and by the way, this suggestion came from Bob Baker. Of course, it's a brilliant idea, and that is the lawn area adjacent to Boca de La Playa, right by the old Hanson Beach Club. Now, there's many events that have gone on there in the past. I was the best man in a wedding there several years ago, so we have weddings there. We've fed hundreds of Marines for barbecues and for breakfasts there. I've attended movie nights there. We can have concerts there, and we can also have a farmer's market there, similar to what they do in Del Mar with the, with the vendors facing toward the sidewalk in there. It would be perfect in there. And, and so that's just one suggestion. The second suggestion is to start a process, process for the implementation of North Beach as a historic district. In 2000, May 2009, there was a study done, so we do not have to start from scratch. We've just dusted off at this point. Tim Brown stated in his last council meeting that parking lot was a, that the El Camino Parking Lot was a real gift to San Clemente. But I think we have other gifts there, and these are the historic buildings that we have down there. Those are real gifts that we have. And several council members have stated that North Beach ideas need to come from the people themselves. Well, that's important. I'm one of the people. So what are the benefits? Create a theme, a branding for North Beach, a gateway to historic gateway. Make this area something special. Energize the area for economic revitalization and provide a relief valve for, for the, from the pier bowl for beachgoers. The pier bowl is maxed out at this point for parking, and we have limited sand down there. We need another beach area there. So what's the process? There was a study done in 2000, May 2009. We need to, we don't have to reinvent the wheel. We can just dust it off. So I would like to meet, in closing, I'd like to meet with the city manager, James, and one of the council members to talk about how we can revitalize this area.
Perfect. Thank you, Wayne.
Thank you.
Can I make a request that I'm that council member?
I was gonna jump on that one. Yeah.
Can two?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, there you go. Thank you, Wayne. Tom?
Yeah, my name's Tom Barnes, San Clemente resident for almost 40 years. Mayor Hamm, members of City Council, I'm here before you to talk about the El Camino Real Parking Lot. This plan that you see on the screen was favored by the Coastal Commission on January 8, 2014, for three primary reasons. The first is that the cars are set back, which preserves the ocean view from El Camino Real. The second was it includes a large area of permeable land, all the green area that you see. And finally, a safety factor of the two-way entry and exit and the one-way traffic. Those are the three reasons why the Coastal Commission preferred this plan to the city's plan. Last council meeting, the city voted 3 to 2 to resubmit their plan, the same plan that the Coastal Commission did not look with favor on on January 8th. This plan, which they did look with favor on, has a 35-foot setback of permeable zar escape in the front, the Tim Brown sidewalk from De Sheca to El Camino Real, something that we made a modification in, the PEV charging station, a bike corral for 12 bikes, handicap parking space, a pay station, and we believe we can put four, possibly five native drought-tolerant strawberry trees along the border with Kalani's. If I can get slide two to come up. Haven't been able to talk about this much recently, but over the last few years, I've mentioned it a number of times. This is the famous Resolution 9455. This land, by the way, the ECR land, it was not a gift. It was taken, and it was taken by the city. The rains came, the floods came, the business owners sued the city. The city's retaliated by taking this land by eminent domain. It was fought for and won in a, maybe not such an even battle, but it was fought for. Anyway, it was taken for one, for two purposes only. One was for storm drains, and the other was for public parking. Storm drains and public parking. Storm drains were put in. The public parking was never done, but that's public parking. So to use this lot for valet parking, which was suggested at the last council meeting, may not be a valid reason to create the lot in the configuration that the city council approved. Okay, this is the track map for Resolution 9455. You can see the five lots that were taken. Also, below the five lots is the Triangle area that was taken in a separate action that was taken in 1969, and a lot of people confuse the two. Am I over?
If you can wrap it up and when one or two presents this.
I can't, but I'll see you next, next meeting.
Okay.
Thanks, Tom. I got this far.
I'm sure Vonnie will hit it for you.
I got two paragraphs there.
Hey, Vonnie.
We've been trying to get about 25 minutes to really do this right.
After Vonnie's, gonna be, Tom, if you wanna meet with me after, mayor's hours, we can discuss.
Sure.
Whatever you want. Perfect. And then after Vonnie's, meet Charles, and then Pete Van Nuys.
Okay, I'm Vonnie Barnes from San Clemente. This is the Resolution 6970, and 10 lots were taken on the Triangle, and that's for public uses like events and farmer's markets and everything, park and, and public parking. Everything's permitted there. This is the same track map again, showing the two, the ECR lot above, which is five lots, and the Triangle below, which is 10. This is the satellite pictures showing the two next to each other. The Triangle portion there is closer to all the amenities, the beach access, the beach club, the casino, everything else. The ECR lot is on the right in the periphery. This is a picture of the Triangle that I took standing there at about five feet. It's got a beautiful ocean view. It is central to all the amenities. It's the center of a clock, starting at 11 o'clock would be your beach access, beach trails, and then you have the ocean, and then you have the metro link to the right, the bike rental, then you have the flower shop, Kalani, Ich Berry, 7-Eleven, casino, don't forget the Miramar, Elaine, Ellie's Cafe. What else did I leave out? I'm sorry if I left other things out. Pacific Bike Trail in De Sheca. All right, so many things can happen here. We've got the historic coral trees already in place that provide shade. Pedestrians are less likely to use these routes that we're asked about last time from the Marblehead Coastal. The Trail A is two and a half football fields away from the ECR lot. They'll cross Aristacián with the Cross Rock, and they'll go down Aristacián, or they'll cut through the Triangle there. Trail B from the coastal, they will come down Pico and go around the beach club to get to the lower right side where the beach tail and access are. They're not likely to use the ECR lot unless they're parked there. Okay, so let's see, what do I have in the next one here? This is the valet parking that was discussed. These are three public-owned lots that can be used for valet parking. Remember, the ECR lot, you can't use that for private affairs, for public parking because of Resolution 9455. Cannot do. So this is information you need to know to make the wise decisions, which is why the alternative with the environmentally green, with the plug-in electrical charger, the handicap parking, the walkways are five feet wide, the aisle has standard 24 feet of backup space, safety features of the one aisle, the one-way traffic, separate entry and exit, cars are set back to preserve the ocean view over the first row of parked cars, and the drought tolerant, tolerant zar escape absorbs greenhouse gases and drains urban runoff. And I have 13 seconds left, so still there. And so let's look at some of these other places to consider for some of these public events. We've got them. Let's use them. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Vonnie. Charles, Pete, and then Louis Barbie.
Hello, my name is Charles Mann, and happy Saint Patrick's Day to you all. I, I'm here tonight to talk about the North Beach revitalization, and as everybody agrees, we have to protect our historical properties and the heritage of San Clemente. It's my opinion that San Clemente is the only city in South Orange County that does not, that, that has six historical properties, five of which are contingent, and does not have a historical district. And it's, it's my opinion that we actually deserve better than that. And today, in light of all of the emotions that have gone on with North Beach and put it in the spotlight, we still have not been able to make, do anything with North Beach as any significant, significance. And it would be my recommendation to the city council that it would entertain the concept of North Beach as a, as a historical district. Historical districts have a way of breathing life into a city. Los Rios Historical District in San Juan Capistrano is a great example. It's a fun place to have lunch and dinner, and it certainly added charm to the city of San Juan. The Old Town Orange Historical District is the same thing. It attracts thousands of tourists every year, and it makes it a fun place to vitalize the downtown. Pasadena Historical District is the same thing. The list goes on. The historical districts have a uniqueness about themselves. They're all different, but yet they have this uniqueness that want to attract people to come there and enjoy them. San Clemente is a gem of village by the sea. We have a unique village here in San Clemente that the residents have been defending from major transformations, from becoming Huntington Beach, and, and yet we don't have a historical district. We have historical properties. We have over 200 of them, but no historical district. And I think it's high time that we recognize North Beach as, as the importance that it deserves and the historical respect that it deserves. And therefore, I would recommend that the city council appoint the city manager to do a study on it, in which we would take off from the 2009 Historical Resources Group analysis that they already did, and, and be able to build on that. I, for one, would be happy to dedicate my time and effort towards the project, and I'm sure there's a lot of other historical people or people that care about San Clemente that would be prepared to dedicate their time. Thank you.
Thanks, Charles. Pete, and then following Pete, will be Louis Barbie.
Good evening, City Council. Mayor Hamm, Pete Van Nuys here. I'm a five-year business owner down in North Beach. I've watched the area evolve slowly during that time. A 26-year resident, raised my family here, fortunately. Like a lot of other people, I've watched North Beach sort of Like a lot of other people, I've watched North Beach sort of its role diminish as the recreation and entertainment center that Ole Hanson originally conceived it to be. I can remember when the Miramar Theater was a functioning cinema, and I can even remember when the building that was on the north side served as a thriving Orange Julius business. I was pleased several years ago, when the city spent no small amount of money on a consultant to evaluate the opportunity of North Beach as a district, and I was dismayed when the council then voted it down. Of course, the reason they voted it down was the massive commercial development that would have swallowed up the triangle portion of the Ole Hanson parking lot. That project is dead and gone, and I hope we can get back on track with some kind of historical district effort. What is unique about North Beach? A lot of cities have historic districts. Developers come in, and in the old redevelopment days, they would tear down a whole bunch of buildings, and there would be an uproar, and a couple of buildings would be saved, and they'd be picked up and moved next to a park or placed in a park, and they'd call that their historic district. They did this down in San Diego, adjacent to Old Town. We have five historic buildings, and I found out we actually have, if you count the residential, we have seven historic buildings. Not just historic buildings, but in their original location, their original configuration. That is a truly historic district, whether you want to call it that or not, and it's sort of a waste to allow a gem like that, though it be in the rough, to go undesignated and unrecognized. What we will get would be public recognition, and we all know that there will be increasing number of the public attending Marblehead up above, and we hope we can lure them down. What are they going to see? Let's create a designated historic district and give ourselves the recognition we deserve as we approach our centennial. Thanks, have a good evening.
Thanks, Pete. And then Louis Barbie is the last card.
I have copies, Louis Barbie from San Clemente. I have copies of what I was going to talk about. On February 28th, 2013, I was injured in my garage. And I went to the house. Next day I know, the fire department come, came. I don't know who called them. I was told to get in on the gurney, and I said, I'm okay. I knew I was okay, because I had been through it before. And under their police powers, I was ordered on the gurney. So I had to get on the gurney. They took me to the hospital. Hospital X-rayed me, discharged me, told me there was nothing wrong, it just pulled muscle. Since that time, I have spent hours and hours with Medicare, calling the fire department, trying to get square things squared away. And the fire chief won't return my phone calls. I get stonewalled by the city. I've sent at least these documents two or three times. The fire department has them. I've tried to get documents under the Freedom of Information Act. I've been denied that. I was told by Medicare to refer to the U.S. Attorney's Office, and then I was told because the city turned it in for collection that my credit is now ruined. At least they knocked my score down, that I should take a civil action against the city. I should also refer to the city attorney, I mean, to the U.S. Attorney, and that was Medicare's advice. So all I ask is, somebody help me.
Mr. Barbie? Sir?
Yes.
Can you leave your phone number here, and I can contact you, and we can sit down and have a discussion, take care of this?
Okay.
And if you'd like to talk to the fire department, you're in luck, because this evening, there's a representative for the OCFA here.
I'd like to tell you something. I'm an ex-fireman.
Okay.
And I'm chairman of the Fire Department Appeal Board, still in Spokane, Washington. And I've got years of service, and it's detrimental to it. That's why I came here.
Okay.
The fire department chief won't return my phone calls.
Okay, sir. Well, if you leave your phone number here with this young lady, then I will give you a call back, and we can get together and discuss what your concerns are.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. We have a lead edition here. Mr. Hedrick?
Good evening, and happy St. Patrick's Day. I got my green on, and I'm here just to kind of reiterate something I brought up before about this amazing family coming to town in April. They'll be here for most of April, and I thought if I could be a little more specific about what I was asking, it might facilitate. And then I have a meeting scheduled with Mayor Hamm. Maybe we can get the details worked out in a couple of days. But San Clemente Green wishes to partner with City of San Clemente in a presentation at the Ole Hanson Fireside Room on Saturday, April 4th, at 7:00 p.m. This adventurous story about a family crossing the seven seas and climbing the seven highest peaks, all by sail, bike, or foot, is raising awareness about climate change. It captures the imagination and hearts of everyone that hears it. Their call to action is usually asking for participation in a beach cleanup, but in this case, they will be encouraging people to sign up for an energy assessment and look into the financial programs that the city has made available for energy efficiency improvements. We will be reinforcing their message, reminding folks that we are here to help the city meet the stated goals of our Sustainability Action Plan. Our request of the city is to make the facility available to us at no charge, usually at $100 per hour, help promote the event with flyers, about $100, run an ad in the local papers for $300 to $500, and place the event on our city calendar. At the city council meeting on April 7th, we hope the city will find it appropriate to welcome these adventurous visitors and give them formal recognition for their epic accomplishments and goals. Establishing the Sustainability Action Plan was the sole reason for us to form San Clemente Green, and it took two years of monthly meetings to get it done. It was a high priority then, and it's even more important now that we implement it to meet the requirements of AB 32. This is a great opportunity for us to work together again and fulfill some of our commitments laid out in the plan. Thank you.
Gary, did you say you already have a date set up with the mayor's hours?
On the 19th.
Perfect. Okay. Thanks, Gary. Those are our last card.
Could we have a motion to waive reading full of all resolutions and ordinances?
Motion by Brown, second by Hamm. All those in favor?
Aye.
Passes 5-0.
Closed session report. City Attorney?
Thanks. Mayor and council, there is no reportable action taken in closed session.
All items listed on the consent calendar are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion without discussion unless council staff or the public requests removal of an item for separate discussion and action. The public has requested the removal of item 6B3. That's the minutes of the adjourned regular planning commission meeting of March 9th.
Laurie? Tim? Kathy? Bob?
6D.
6D.
Move the balance?
Motion by Doncheck, second by Ward. All those in favor? Aye. Passes 5-0. 6B3 is the first item?
Yes.
Okay. And we have some cards. We have Steven Uzdan.
Good evening.
Teresa Hotfett, and then Sue Joczenzki.
Good evening. My name is Steven Uzdan. I am the Executive Vice President of Cornwasser Shopping Center Properties, the managing partner of the Estrella Project Phase One. Thank you. I'd like to thank the city for the city staff's outstanding project management of our project thus far. We respectfully request the council's approval of the planning commission vote in favor of Camino de Estrella and Camino Miracosta Monument signage, building signage facing Camino de Estrella, and Sports Authority signage facing the freeway. Currently, Sports Authority has the right to terminate its lease if this signage is not approved. If the matter is called for a meeting, which sounds like the earliest it could be called for is April 7th, that will prevent us from starting construction late this month as planned. And after lots of pushing and shoving with Sprouts and Stein Mart last week, if we start at the end of this month, there's a 2015 opening. If we get called up, we will not be able to start construction in time to deliver in time for 2015 openings. Stein Mart and Sprouts will get pushed to 2016 openings, which will give both Sprouts and Stein Mart the respective rights to terminate their leases. Needless to say, termination of their leases, or their rights to terminate their leases will jeopardize the project and will prevent us from commencing construction. We are working diligently to transform the existing blighted Kmart into a dynamic, multi-tenant retail project with high-quality retailers, high-quality Spanish architecture, and a project that will serve as a catalyst and an enabler for the adjacent Burnham project. This, you know, the planning commission voted four to three in favor of the signage. One objection was raised that Marblehead wasn't given freeway signage, so why should we be given freeway signage? And there are two major differences between Marblehead and our project. Our project is existing blight. Marblehead has been a new development. And a second major difference is that whereas Marblehead would have had major, significant signage that would be very visible from the freeway, the only signage that I understand there's any objection to is limited Sports Authority signage for just Sports Authority or the tenant in that specific location within the building, which is severely impacted by distance from the street and grade issues, and will not be very visible at all. We hope that the council will be business-friendly, and that the council will allow our project to proceed by approving the meeting minutes of the planning commission. I'm very happy to answer any questions that any of the council members have for us, and I've made myself available since last week's meeting through the city manager's office to be available in the interim as well, but I'm available now for any questions.
Thank you, Steve.
Thank you.
Teresa? Did I say that right?
Therese.
Therese.
Yes. Good evening, council members. I'm Therese Hotfett, and I'm the president of Burnham USA Equities, and we are the managing partner for Phase Two of the shopping center with the Cornwassers. And we are co-developing this property, and I also respectfully request that you approve those minutes. If this is delayed any longer, we are also in jeopardy of losing our anchor tenants, one being TJ Maxx, the other one being Ulta. Plus, we're in negotiations with a coffee shop, which is a very high-end, one which I'm sure you would all enjoy. As you know, this center has been blighted for quite some time. We're in a very unique opportunity at this time to co-develop with the Cornwassers. We were able to terminate Big Lots lease. They were able to terminate the Kmart lease. We want to provide a beautiful, unique center for the gateway of your community. We feel that the residents are very excited about it, but if we're delayed, if they're delayed, we'll be delayed. If they can't start, we can't start. We also have co-tenancy issues. We want to start at the end of this month also. We've been planning our demo interior. If we don't get TJ Maxx in by fall, then we have liquidated damages which are substantial. And we cannot have that happen, and we need to start immediately. So I respectfully request that you approve this, and we're very excited about this opportunity with Cornwassers to develop into a beautiful colonial revival that you have requested of us. And I am also available for any questions.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sue, did you want to say something, or just questions?
I'd like to say a brief thank you.
Okay.
Hi there. My name is Sue. I work with Cornwasser Shopping Center Properties as the managing member. I just wanted to say we value your time highly. You know, this is a project that's a very unique alignment of the stars that probably will not come together like this for at least 30, 40 years. We're trying really, we're working very diligently to keep the stars aligned and keep this project together. And, you know, we just wanted to reiterate to you, I know that you know how important this project is, and you want to see this happen for the city, and we've worked with staff. They've been very helpful to us, and we just want to, you know, reiterate that, you know, this project will come together as we have intended it to, and as you guys all want us to see it come together. So, thank you very much.
Thanks, Sue. Sean, do you want to come? Yeah, that was our last speaker card, Sean.
I'm ready to move the item if there's.
Well, I have a question. I want to ask you a question. Sean, can I ask you a question?
Absolutely.
The frontage signs that front Estrella on the front facade of the buildings?
Yes, ma'am.
What's, how tall are those signs? I know that they had 64 square feet was allowed, but they're asking for more. Is it 664?
While you're looking for an answer, just for people that are watching at home, or those of you that are in the chamber, these are minutes from a planning commission meeting, and the speakers and the questions all have to do with item 8A, which is a discretionary sign permit for the shopping center at Estrella in the I-5. So to be clear, your question, are you asking for what is the square footage of the signs, or are you asking for the height of the signs?
I would like to know how much greater we allowed those signs to be. It wasn't clear to me in the minutes.
So the Sprouts, the larger Sprouts wall sign is 156 square feet proposed. The Stein Mart sign is proposed 230 square feet. The Sports Authority signage on the front is there is 176 square feet.
And what would be what's allowed under current code?
They would be 64 square feet, the wall signs, they would at least be allowed to have.
Each one?
Yeah, each one.
Okay. So we went over on each one of these signs to give them more visibility?
I would say the analysis was based more on proportionality in design and making sure that the design of the signs and the scale fit with proportionality of the designs and the improvements to the center.
Okay. And did we not also allow the monument signs to be larger? I think they are 10 feet high instead of 6 feet was the code?
That is allowed, actually, in the code, that it's 6 feet is allowed by right, and then anyone can apply for a discretionary sign permit to go up to 10 feet. That did not require any kind of exception, no.
Monument signs were not, not an exception, but they were discretionary?
Yes, that is correct. They did require discretionary sign permit.
Okay. That's what I needed. And we allowed those to be higher for what, taller for what reason?
That was their proposal, again, based on the setback from the street, and again, the size of the area that they are located in terms of the landscaping, also the amount of frontage, the size of that center and the location on the street is what they proposed, and again, the scale, and as they're viewed, and the setback from the building, how far those buildings are set back and to allow for proper identification. It's pretty typical for many of these shopping centers throughout our community to have monument signs associated with also wall signs. So it was, it's just part of their proposal. Staff evaluated, again, based on design. We are supportive of the design.
Okay. And this project, can you tell me when it started?
The full remodel?
When did it first come to staff?
We, I believe we first met with them in July of last year, and then we went through the process. They came in with a very modern design, and we worked with them very closely to, you know, gave, provided them information regarding the requirements of the community, the general plan requirements associated with the design of that center, and that was worked through, I believe, Phase One. Architecture went before planning commission, I want to say, the end of October, and then, I believe, Phase Two. I'm going to guess off the top of my head, either end of November or the first meeting in December, I believe. But it was towards the end of last year, it was Phase Two.
Okay, and I remember that we were rushing on it to try to get them to get a start date. And what was that start date? Because I cannot recall that from planning commission. They were trying to break ground.
They were trying to break ground as early in 2015 as they could.
Okay. So what has been the holdup of them not breaking ground? And this sign?
Yes, signage, and they've indicated signage as a major issue for them, but that would probably be a question more fully for the applicant as to what their concerns are.
I was just trying to get a background.
I can tell you, they're still working through building permit, their final building. They've resubmitted, which hopefully will be their last, it serves as Phase One. They have submitted in for their building permits, and then also Phase Two has been submitted.
So I don't know what's protocol on this. Do we discuss it if there's no one else to talk about?
I think we have a couple more questions before we move on.
Okay.
You're absolutely right, though, Kathy. It is kind of an odd, odd thing for an applicant to pull their own project. That would have been, should have been left to us, and I had it on my list to pull, because I also want to talk about the signs, Sean, because I got to tell you, I watched the planning commission meeting, and I am, I'm okay with most.
It is kind of an odd, odd thing for an applicant to pull their own project. That would have been, should have been left to us, and I had it on my list to pull, because I also want to talk about the signs, Sean, because I got to tell you, I watched the Planning Commission meeting, and I am, I'm okay with most of this stuff. I'm encouraging you guys, I'm great, I'm glad you're doing it, but those signs on the front of those buildings, to me, are going to be, we're going to look at those for the rest of our lives, and they are way too big. To go over our sign codes by those kind of numbers, to me, is unacceptable. And the reasoning I heard was it was because we were so far from the street, we need bigger signs on our buildings. Well, that's why you got monument signs. You can't tell me I'm going to drive by on the street and look back at your building and need that sign. It's, it's, they're just too big for me. I can't, I can't be in favor of something that goes that far over our sign code for the signs on the fronts of those buildings. And, Sean, you showed two slides when you showed the pictures of the signs on the front of the buildings. You remember that?
Yes.
One of the, in one of the slides you could barely read, that was our 64 feet. So, I understand there's some flexibility in there. I get that, for the scale of the building and the picture frame around it, I get that. But, the other slide you showed was of something from, I don't know, the Inland Empire somewhere, giant signs on the front of the buildings, and that's, that's not us. That's just not us. So, I was going to call this up myself and, and ask for some discussion here at the council on those signs.
Can I get off that? Can I just ask the Talega Shopping Center that sits so far back where Walmart is, do we know what those signs are? Because that's a good, they sit back pretty far.
There, there was a sign exception permit approved for that, for Plaza Pacifica as well. They have, I believe, a 30-foot monument signs along Pico, and then they have, I believe, the primary tenant signs are all 150 square feet or more, and then the smaller tenants go down, I believe, some of the small, I think like Michaels has 100 square feet, they get 100 square feet because they're considered a secondary tenant, and then the inline tenants have less than that.
Mayor, could I just interject? The rule for the council on this item is to understand, as you have been, what happened at the Planning Commission, what the presentation was, what the application was, and the scope of the commission's action. But what we're not doing right now is rehearing this, unless the council pulls it and calls it, calls it up. I won't want you to pre-vote it or pre-discuss it till it's noticed before you for rehearing. But to state your reasons briefly, as you have, about why you'd want to do it and pull it and call it up is just fine.
If I may, city attorney, I believe that certain questions were raised about our project, and I'd like the opportunity to respond to those questions, otherwise I feel that other council members may be biased by what they've heard without hearing a response.
Yeah, appreciate that. If only it were on the hearing for that, on the agenda for that discussion, but it hasn't been properly noticed for that. And what's before the council is whether they'd opt to do that down the road.
My statement about the timing issues that calling it up would...
Thank you, and absolutely relevant to your discussion about when and whether to hear this as a council. Thank you.
Is anybody else having any comments? Tim?
You know what, I've, there are some questions here, but I, I am particularly interested in the timing of this. You know, we are, we're reviewing what the Planning Commission did, but if we were to call this up for review by the council, when would we be listening to this? When would we be hearing this? For April 7th? And I'd like to find out if that is going to, from the applicant, as to what effects that will have on what they're doing. Is that appropriate?
Absolutely in line with what's before you.
Thank you very much. It will force us to not commence construction until after the outcome of the April 7th meeting.
I think...
And by, and by virtue of that, it will, it will impact, it will prevent us from delivering sufficiently early in 2015 for, as it is, we're, we have our backs against the wall to be able to deliver, but I've worked out a schedule with Sprouts and Steinmark to take delivery of the interior of their buildings at the end of June, and that we will finish the exterior of the buildings and the parking lot by the end of August, which would allow retailers to open by the end of September. You know, as I mentioned to the Planning Commission, you know, we have competing factions within our ownership group. One faction would like us to just put a single tenant in there at the minimus cost, and one faction, our faction, which is the managing partner, would like to put in this multi-tenant project with high-quality users at a cost of over $11 million. And we're doing our best to keep this project together. This project is teed up and is the city's project, but I would also say that it would be, that if it doesn't work, it doesn't work, and we're doing the best we can to keep this project together. Again, we've been available since last week to answer any questions or concerns. We were very flexible in the design review committee, as Councilmember Ward is aware from her observation of the design review committee, to working with the Planning Commission members, to be flexible in terms of building signage. If Councilmember Baker would like to discuss building signage, and if there's some flexibility in our part, I'd be happy to work that out this evening so we can keep the project on schedule. But if what we're talking about is the city council just, but we're working very hard to keep this project together.
So, let me take over here, if I may, really quickly. So, is it appropriate for me to ask what items that we would identify as concerns that we would deliberate upon if we did call it up?
Yeah, setting the table for that discussion is just fine.
Okay.
But having it stopped.
And before that, just for clarification, can one person call it up, or does it have to be a majority of the council to allow for the call up?
I believe the law is, what it is, one person call it up, but the majority can stop it from being called up.
So, it is a vote, it's a majority action?
Yes. Well, it's a majority action to stop it, it's one person bring it up.
Yeah.
But, so here's why I ask that question is, it sounds as if there's enough questions about this for us to deliberate before the council, which I think is fine. But what I'd like to do is at least identify here what our primary concerns are, to at least clearly indicate to the applicant what we see as items of concern, so that you can have a degree of confidence as to what we are concerned about, we can answer those questions or at least be prepared to discuss them.
And the other thing I would add, if I may, is that you would have my personal commitment, which I think that Jim and Sean could speak to, as well as the design review committee members and the Planning Commission, that if you don't call this up, we will still be prepared to make concessions to you, you know, within reason in terms of the height of the letters, for instance, Councilmember Baker, we're open to working with you, we're just trying to keep this project together. But again, you know, I know that's difficult for you to hear from an applicant, but I will tell you that if you speak with the Planning Commission members who were at the design review committee, I think the Planning Commission members who were at the Planning Commission, and if you speak with staff, I would hope that they would vouch for our credibility that we're open to working with you. All we're trying to do is bring this project to fruition, and an act that seems relatively simple of calling it up is an act that will materially jeopardize this project. And, and again, we're prepared to continue to be flexible with you, and, you know, we've been, we've made ourselves available to come in to meet this whole time, and we're continued, we continue to be flexible to work with you to address your concerns. We just want this project to happen, but at the end of the day, if it can't happen, it can't happen.
So, so what I'm proposing, though, is, is if we can at least, you know, it's obvious that we have concerns, and we're, you know, we're going to call this up. So, because if Kathy wants to bring it up, I'm not going to vote for her not to hear that item. But what I would like to do is to at least identify what those concerns are in a narrower phase. Bob has mentioned about the signs on the buildings themselves. Kathy, it sounded like...
Mine is just the freeway sign. I actually agree with the rest of the signage, so mine is the freeway sign. I think that's a bigger discussion.
And the reason why I specify that is I think it's important for you to know what exactly is going to be a topic of discussion or in play.
The freeway sign is a deal killer for Sports Authority.
Okay, understood.
Or so they've told us.
Understood. And it's not necessarily that we're going to be denying that as much as we just want to talk about it.
But what I would tell you is that, let's assume for the moment that you were to have your, that you procedurally could have your meeting tonight, and Councilmember and Kathy would be against the freeway signage. If tonight, hypothetically, you were to deny the freeway signage, I would have to report that to Sports Authority. Sports Authority, from everything they've told me over and over again, will terminate its lease. If Sports Authority terminates its lease, we will have no choice but to go back to the single-tenant option.
Why don't we be very clear, then? Kathy has a concern about freeway signage. Bobby, you have a concern about it?
I do not.
Tim, before you go in the direction you're going, because I'm not opposed to that, I just want to get some clarification from Sean, if you could, because it wasn't very clear in the minutes, and I, too, had similar concerns to Kathy. So, Sean, could you please share with council, will you share with me the details about the freeway-oriented signage?
Regarding some of the height information?
Yes. And did you, were you able to make a slide of it or only a copy?
I was not able to put, I did not put this slide together, but in our discussion, there was the...
It's over 60 seconds.
So, this was associated with the freeway-oriented sign, there was a question that was given to staff regarding the heights and location in terms of with the facade remodeled, they're doing some additional components. The corner there, which you can see, the tower element is on the corners right there next to Sports Authority, is at 42 feet. The corner element there is at 38 feet where the freeway-oriented sign is going to be located. The sign itself is about 7 feet 4 inches high, and the sign starts about 20 feet 6 inches off the ground. Due to the unique character of the nature of that site, the freeway is approximately 20 feet from, higher than the footprint where the, where the bottom is of the finished floor of the parking lot. So, just to give a sense in terms of scale, location of the freeway-oriented signage on the, on the building, that was the crux of the discussion I had with Mayor Ham.
So, Sean, to clarify that, the parapet part that comes up, that's 18 feet higher than the top of the plane of the building, existing? If it's 20 feet, it's 38?
Looks more like 15.
I can't, yeah, it might be 15.
Looks more like 15.
But can I ask what that is? Because that wasn't clear on the meeting, the Planning Commission meeting.
The existing parapet height is right at 24 feet.
So, it'd be 14 feet.
It's 14 feet.
And the parapet was there, it has the request in terms of the city.
It was, it was, to add more interest to that corner, I remember that.
The city, and we're very happy with it, but as we expressed in our meeting back in July, when we had provided the more modern architecture and were asked to move to the Spanish architecture, that one critical element of this project was the ability for that one tenant that is so impacted, and that sits below the grade of Community Estrella on the freeway, and that has impacted parking, and that has impacted visibility from Community Estrella, to have this freeway-oriented signage. And if this was, we were told that it would have to go through a process, but if this was something that was impossible, I wish we hadn't gone through the process at all, because it really will have proven to have been a waste of all of our time. The reality is that, and the Planning Commission wisely asked us to concede, as she did, that the right to the freeway signage would be limited to only the tenant that sits in that space, and if there would be so much as a 1-inch expansion of the frontage of that tenant, then that right to signage would go away, and it would have to come back before the council. The reality is that coming south today from Los Angeles, we could not see the building one iota. This signage from the freeway will have such limited visibility as to be ridiculous. In fact, one of the, one of the Planning Commission votes against the signage was based upon the fact that the Planning Commission didn't think it would help Sports Authority, but the reality is that Sports Authority ultimately is going to decide what helps Sports Authority or not, and for this project to hang on that, you know, we've been very open about how important it is for this project. When Sean asked me, could we take the sign down a foot from the 21 or 22 feet, we went down to the 20.6 feet as a compromise after the Planning Commission meeting last week as further evidence of our willingness to be flexible. If you said to me, Stephen, instead of 7 feet 4-inch high letters, make it 7-foot high letters, done. We're just looking to try to have, make, to create, have a viable project. I cannot impress upon you enough how, how straightforward we've been, and how, having met with the retailers again this past week at the shopping center conference, the regional shopping center conference in Monterey, this, to keep this project alive, we have to keep moving. So, again, if, there are two reasons to call this up. One is for freeway signage. Calling up this matter is essentially to say we're going to debate freeway signage, but if freeway signage were denied tonight, then that would have one, one very predictable outcome, and it's just, it's not of my control. I wish I can tell you no freeway signage and we'd still have a project, but I can't tell you that. That's the Sports Authority Corporation.
Perfect.
With respect to the height...
Thank you.
Steve, yeah, you drove it home.
Can I correct one point that he said, though? I was on the Planning Commission, they were not told in July that they could have freeway signage. There was different people managing this project, and I remember the discussion of this wall and this decorative feature, but I remember those project managers being told that they would not get a freeway sign on this, and they nodded in agreement. So, I know our staff did not say that you could have freeway signage.
I think we're talking about a meeting that occurred prior to your Planning Commission meeting, and, and I was not informed otherwise, although one of my colleagues may have been who didn't inform me.
I don't think so.
I just, I don't want that on the record that our staff...
We should ask the applicant to sit down.
Yeah. I have a couple more questions for Sean, too. Sean, do you just want to real quickly review some of the reasons that staff thought it was a good idea to grant these exceptions that we normally don't grant?
So, in essence, the basis for looking at it was the unique character of the site. You know, whenever we go through the discretionary process, we look at every location as its own set of circumstances. And so, when evaluating this project site, both in terms of the freeway-oriented sign as well as the larger signs along Estrella, it was all about design context and the unique character of the site. And because of the unique character of the site, it's setback from the street, the larger facades, that, you know, that these types of, you could say, medium box tenants, they're not the large, huge box that was in there at the Kmart center, and, and things associated with that and visibility, the location of where some of these tenants are going to go, the fact that the Sports Authority is located behind existing facilities, they have, you know, further decreased visibility than some of the other types of locations. So, again, all of this really played into the evaluation of the uniqueness and character in terms of evaluating how this particular situation should be looked at in terms of why staff felt that they could support, and ultimately why Planning Commission supported it. And actually, I will say what Mr. Ozen was, said was correct regarding, there was a condition of approval added to the project regarding the freeway sign, further tying it to that corner location, because it was really seen to make the findings, it had to do with the, that corner tenant that was so impacted, being behind the bank, being behind that gas station, having the limited visibility being sunk down, is the why they were supportive of the freeway sign. And really, if there was, as he said, any expansion, and they made that very clear, any expansion of that front facade that would increase the visibility from Estrella, that the freeway-oriented sign could no longer, would have to come down. And so, that was an added condition of approval that was, you know, approved upon that night and that they agreed to at Planning Commission. So, again, based on the unique characters of the site, the design, scale, proportionality in terms of the design character, that was a big topic of conversation at Design Review Subcommittee, and ultimately also at Planning Commission, ensuring consistency now and in the future, really limiting the areas, knowing that all future signage will proportionally fit in that same space, all of this we tried to look at. So, it really had to do with design, scale, proportionality as they're viewed, as well as the unique character of this site.
Great. Thank you, Sean. Laura, do you have a...
Yeah, I'd like to make a few comments before we decide what we're going to do, and a couple of things. First of all, this has been a troubled location for decades, and that we have someone coming forward willing to do a complete and total facelift on something that is zoned for commercial activity, I think, is a good thing for the city. I also, one of my themes tonight is going to be about representation. We represent the residents. Last year, in the state of the city, speeches, in public speeches given by council members, whenever this project was brought up as on the horizon, the three S's, it was before TJ Maxx, it was Sprouts, Sports Authority, and Steinmark, the community would clap. People are so excited to have these retail choices come into the community. So, and then we just went through the LTFP process where we understand just how important sales tax revenue is to balancing our budget. So, there's a lot of good reasons to be business-friendly for this project. I was one of the minority votes against the signage for Marblehead Coastal back in the day. There were two of us that said no freeway-facing signs, and I was one of them. This project needs to stand on its own merits. I think Design Review Subcommittee did what they were supposed to do. I think the Planning Commission, by putting, you know, some very tight parameters on what the signage can and cannot do in terms of conditions of approval... the signage can and cannot do in terms of conditions of approval, is a demonstration that they did what they were supposed to do. And I would hate for us, as a body, to be the wrench and the spokes on a project that has a lot of merits. And my final comment is, I listen hard to residents. We don't have any residents, this project has been publicly noticed many, many, many times. We don't seem to have any resident opposition to it. And so I take that as another data point, as the community wants this. So whatever we decide to do, whatever path you're going down, I think it's important to look at this project on its own merits and recognize what it's bringing to the community.
Are you going to follow up with a motion, or?
I wasn't, because it sounded like something why I...
Well, the question I wanted to ask, if I could, Scott, is, when we call up an item like this, can we call up only an element of a decision, or do we have to call up the entire item for review?
As I understand your code, it's a, it's a hearing de novo on, on the entire application.
Mm-hmm. Can you clearly, can you clearly specify, though, what the items of focus are in that call-up?
Mayor and council, yes, that's possible. You can say, as the motion maker, what in particular you had in mind to look at. That doesn't prohibit some member of the community, a third party, from expanding it at the rehearing, but...
That's absolutely correct, but it does indicate the council's interest and focus in a call-up.
Absolutely, from, from this side of the table.
Okay.
They don't want it called. They don't want it called.
But, and the reason why, and there's a reason why I ask those questions, is because effectively, by narrowing our, our focus on this, that, for example, Bob's concerns are about the size of the square footage on those signs, not necessarily the freeway sign. So as I have discussions, it's not a denial, it's just simply an inquiry into that and what modifications we would make on it. And so I want to send a clear signal, I guess, by being very specific, no matter what motion is made. I don't have one. But I'm just saying, if we're specific in our areas of focus on this, then we can clearly signal, if we do call it up, what we're calling it up for and what we're not interested in modifying.
Just a quick point, and that, maybe for the city attorney, I don't know if he's aware, is that there was actually two separate actions by the planning commission. There was two resolutions that were approved. There was a discretionary sign permit resolution and a sign exception permit resolution. Maybe getting to what Councilmember Brown was asking, again, I don't know if that makes a difference, whether it's the whole project, or if they can just call up one resolution or the other.
Oh, thanks, thank you, Sean. That's a really good clarification, and those would be discrete applications, subject to discrete decisions to call up, if that makes sense.
So in that case, we'd have to call up both ordinances separately, or one, or the others?
One or the other, or both. Yeah, thanks for that.
Can I ask a question, legal question? I know our legal attorney for planning commission said that this does not set a legal precedent, freeway signs. However, it does set a judgment preference to where other people could now ask us for signage, people that have been waiting for signage on the freeway, because they sit down, down slope, and we have not given that to, we have not approved the project. So it's, legally, we don't have to, but we could be sued quite easily if we do not give this to someone else, because we have favored Sports Authority, just because they're new. There is actually existing people we have denied this same instance, too. So that's my concern, is the bigger open question of what we're doing with freeway signage, because, can I state an opinion of why?
Sure. Yeah, if you want me to answer that, I can, or if, maybe it was rhetorical, Kathy.
Well, go ahead and answer that first.
Mayor and council, and thank you, because that was part of the, the record with the planning commission. And Councilmember Ward's expressed the question exactly how it was raised, I think, with, with the commission. The answer there is that legally, you can only issue these, I call them variances, but there's special considerations for signage, when there are unique circumstances that distinguish this property from others. And those have already been named in the, in the discussion with Sean, how, how the property's situated, topography, its configuration, and so on. If you, and so by definition, the fact that you found those unique factors suggests that that's not precedent-setting, where those factors are lacking. So I don't know what specific other sites were, were discussed at the planning commission, but if they're different from this in terms of elevation, in terms of view sheds, in terms of the distance and configuration of the site, then this would not be precedent-setting as a legal matter. Whether it's precedent-setting in terms of fairness, business, and so on, is up to the council, that's a, that's a policy determination. When and if a property submitted an application with very, very similar circumstances as this, then we'd have to talk about how you could find it in this case, but not that one. But it, but it presupposes that this is different from, from other applications coming before you. Again, whether that's a precedent or a slippery slope, in terms of policy, is completely up to the council.
That mostly is my concern, that we're opening it up, and this is a sign that I don't believe Sports Authority truly needs, that it's, it's going to serve the purpose that, hear me out for a second. Because of the topography, this lot sits downward, we allowed the signs to be much larger than normal. And if you can remember, we target, this, the planning commission and council, you know, we made sure that the, everything was very small. And we did that for 24-hour fitness also. We really, really checked it. And then this, because it's a new center, we have been totally, our staff bending over backwards for the center, we have met every deadline, they've worked overtime, we had a special planning commission meeting scheduled just to hear this. So we've, we have been business-friendly in this. I don't think this is an effective sign for them, and I think we've done other things to help them and to be business-friendly, and to give them identification that they do not need, because the sign is not effective. We've given them the monument signs that are 10 feet instead of 6 feet tall, and we've given them larger signs on the front. They have identification. I don't think they need the freeway sign that is going to be a detriment to us, because I believe it is opening it up, and that we're going to have other people asking us now for signage. We have an outlet mall coming in that probably would like signage. So that is my concern, is that, and, and any council member that voted for signage for a shopping center, freeway signage, is no longer on this board. So I would just like to point that out. And, wait a minute. And the other thing, the last thing I want to say is, I ran on this, that I was going to mitigate the development, the impacts, freeway, all the buildings. I want the retail here, but I don't believe the signage, I believe that is one of the impacts that we are supposed to mitigate. And I believe the residents were clear on that, they do not want freeway signs. And this one, I wish the applicant could just go to Sports Authority, and we have done so much to get them here and get this project going. I don't think that we need the sign. They were, this is the first we're hearing about it, and we've been over backwards for them. So I don't want to open it up. I think it's a bigger issue, I think we need, this retail is coming into our city, I think it's going to be hugely successful, but I think we need to do a little finessing here and not have it blatantly open to our residents. Here you go, here's, here's all this retail. And I think there should be some sensitivity here in that.
You brought two points, Kathy. The first one, Scott, if you could comment on how this site is specifically different from the Marblehead sign package that was not approved that caused litigation in the past?
Yeah, I won't give you my own opinion, but what the, what the commission found, I think the key focus had to do with, with grades, and how this property is, is depressed in terms of topography, especially in relationship to the freeway, as compared to, well, and smaller in scale, as compared to the Marblehead Coastal site, which is prominent, much, much more prominent in terms of topography, and much larger in terms of scale and the stretch on the, on the frontage. So I, I think those were the main considerations, as those differences were discussed, Sean.
Okay. And then the second point Kathy, you brought up, was in terms of mitigation, and I think the mitigation factor is the fact that we're turning a blighted structure into a Spanish colonial revival structure that is going to be representative of our community.
I agree with that. I just, I, we have been supportive of the entire project until they, they came now and asked for a freeway sign, and that's where I stop on it.
I hear your concern.
I've worked on it since planning commission, so I'm familiar with it. I just think for a sign that really isn't that necessary, or effective, it's not that effective, because it does sit down. And I didn't realize that that parapet wall was so high when I was trying to view it from the freeway. It's much taller than the building. So...
Okay.
Let's find out if there's other traction against the freeway sign, because if it's...
Can I, can I, Scott, please stop me when I go beyond the...
We were actually pretty close there.
Yeah, well, but...
I see Scott's jaw bulking right now, every time we open our mouths, so...
I want to go with the...
Yeah, exactly. Lake Forest looks nicer now, huh, Scott?
Do not, don't quit, all right? Come on, don't, come on, give us another couple of months, please.
Let me just share with you the parameter, if I can, council member. What you don't want to do, if this should come to hearing, is pre-commit yourselves to a disposition tonight, in, in that future hearing, that's all.
Okay.
And, and that's new law. It used to be you, it was a good idea to explain yourselves, until a case was decided against Newport Beach last month, we've talked about it, and you don't want to predispose your vote in that, in that subsequent hearing. But explaining why...
What would be an example of a predisposition?
Wait a minute, Tim, I just want to say one thing for, just for Scott's information. We've all changed our minds up here so many times on the record, that, you know, we're completely immune to that. We're, we're, we're good for that.
I, I think there's nothing wrong with, there's nothing wrong with explaining, if the council were to opt, to put this on calendar, why, why you're doing that, as compared to letting the planning commission decision sit. But I wouldn't want you to debate that outside of hearing.
All right, well, I just want to, I just want to talk to Kathy for one minute about the freeway sign. And, and the, one of the applicants said a very important point to me, and he said that it's up to Sports Authority to decide whether it's effective or not, and that's not really up to us. To me, I've looked at the site, and I've looked at where the sign's going to be, and I, if it was my project, I wouldn't pay 50 cents to put up a sign there, because nobody's going to see it. But it's not precedent-setting, because the planning commission is a discretionary body, is what we heard from the attorney. It's not precedent-setting, because the sites are all different. So we're not setting a precedent for freeway, for freeway signs in town if we approve this one. I get that. But to me, I can't get over the inland empire size of these signs on the fronts of the buildings. That's, that's what I, that's where I'm choking on this. And so if there's...
Would you, did you believe them when they said they would talk, you know, if they could move this forward, that they would talk and make adjustments, or do you think that was developer speaking?
No, I, no, I do. They, I, I can, I can believe that. I, we're probably not acceptable to talk any numbers right here, but...
Yeah, I, I think we're, we're kind of over the line in terms of...
Okay.
How much we can discuss this time without putting it on calendar, I'm sorry.
I'll just put it out here to move things forward. I move that we approve the minutes from the regular commission meeting of March 9th, 2015, which is item 6B. So I'll just put that out there, it's a motion.
I'll second that.
Okay, so we can have discussion. And I guess I would qualify it with the, I think you're making really good points, Bob. And I'd even like to be part of that conversation, either, you know, in, in the brown act acceptable way, but I think you've got a really good point, so...
And I can, you know, if the applicant is willing to do that, I will, I will be able to support this.
Okay. May I ask, what recourse we have if we feel that the applicant is not being cooperative? Can we call back this decision, as a final tonight, once we say approve these minutes?
That's a good question. So as I understand, the, the idea is that this could be agendized, but not as a rehearing on the application. I think that's what the applicant was proposing. Is that what you mean, Councilmember Brown?
Effectively, that one of the, the concerns I would have is that, I also, like Bob, have concerns about just the sheer square footage of the frontage. And because it's just so, it seems out of scale, but, but, but that was a concern, it's something frankly that feels more negotiable than anything else. But if we were to approve these minutes, do we lose all negotiating power, or are we stuck?
Well, once, there's, there's, yeah, once the applicant goes forward and breaks ground in reliance on these resolutions of approval, then the entitlement of the planning commission would be considered vested at that stage. There could be voluntary discussions or discussions short of that, or scoping sessions to, to take advantage of a further discussion. But once, once they go and break ground pursuant to these permits, then, then we'd, we ought to consider that best.
Can a resident appeal the decision?
Yeah, I don't know how those deadlines interrelate with, with tonight's date, but yes.
Steve, do you have a comment you want to make?
A quick one?
A quick one, yeah. Different, different points.
Just quickly, number one, I'm available to meet as early as you'd like to meet. Number two, we don't have a building permit yet, so we're not able to start in reliance. We're happy to meet with you, and we really want to work with you in earnest, as we, as we get to the design review committee and then the planning commission.
Okay. So with that, we have a motion by Doncheck, second by Ham. All's in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All's opposed?
No.
That's Kathy, four to one, with Ward opposed. Okay, next item, 6D. Thank you very much for coming this evening, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you very much.
I look forward to your project.
Please let me know when it's convenient for us to get to you.
Fantastic. I think James is going to set that up with you right now.
James, I have your phone number.
I'm also looking forward for staff to come back to us and indicate to us how those discussions are going about some of the concerns we raised.
Follow up. Yep.
Hi. Jennifer Rosales, senior transportation engineer.
Jennifer, I, I called this up because I'm very excited about this, and I'd just like the public to hear, anyone who's still awake at home, or in the audience, to please, I'd just like to hear just a few words about how great this synchronization is going to be, and where it starts and stops.
Yes, I can, I can just do that really briefly.
Please, just, just, this is just for informational purposes.
Great. One of the corridors, there's two corridors that's going to be synchronized through this project. The first one, Avenida Vista Hermosa, which will start at Avenida Pico and go all, basically the entire stretch of Avenida Vista Hermosa, from Pico West on one end to Pico East on the other end. And then the other corridor is Camino de los Maras, and that corridor will be coordinated from Camino Miracosta to La Pata.
And most of, of Camino de los Maras has already been synchronized, is that correct? This is just going to be more?
That's correct. What this will do is, this will get us connection with our central system to that corridor, so that way we can maintain better control, and we have controlled the GPS clocks that are in there, and we'll be able to further fine-tune the timing along that stretch.
Okay. And for all the residents out there, if you have questions about the signal synchronization that's working on all the streets in the city, please call Ms. Rosales and, and send her a note about it, because there, your input's very valuable, and, because it's a very, it's kind of an exact science, but not really, it takes some massaging, so your input's very valuable. So please contact Mr. Frank or Ms. Rosales with your input.
I've already taken advantage of that, Bob.
Thank you. And with that, with that, I'll move the item.
Motion by Baker, second by Doncheck. All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Past five, oh, past five zero.
Report from the Public Works Director concerning conceptual designs for the beach restrooms at Boca del Canyon and T Street.
Let's take a, let's take a five-minute recess, and we'll come back.
Can we, can, can I alert Mr. Cameron for something? I, before we start here, I live within 500 feet of the T Street restroom, however, I am more than 500 feet from the Boca del Canyon restroom. So can we bifurcate this item to just speak about the Boca del Canyon restroom first, and then I'll leave the room, and you can...
Sure.
Continue your, your discussions about T Street, is that all right? Is that all right, Scott?
Absolutely. Okay, nobody's opposed to that, Scott's on board with that.
Thank you.
So when we come back, as long as Mr. Cameron can follow those rules, then...
As long as I can do two presentations.
Perfect. Okay, we'll, we'll reconvene at 7:50.
Thank you. Thank you.
We're here at the city's water reclamation plant, and... Psycho water system, sand filters, and off behind me is...
.................................................................................
I have a question on this one. I don't want to design from the dais, but it seemed to me that it would make sense to have the toilet go where the existing plumbing's located, as opposed to moving it to the other side and creating new plumbing?
The existing stalls are not ADA accessible.
No, no, I'm sorry about the ADA and where the entry point is. If you flopped them around, did it flip-flop?
I'm sorry, I don't understand what you mean.
I know. So, the, the new entry point...
The new entry point.
Is over the existing shower.
Yes.
Which has existing plumbing. Wouldn't it make more sense to put the new ADA compliant restroom there and put the door where the restroom's going to be, to save money, so we're not adding additional plumbing costs?
We could look into the possibility of that. This is what the consultant has recommended, but I...
Who's our consultant?
RIM Design Group.
Are they here?
They are not here.
Hmm. I'm not a designer, but that just makes sense to me.
Well, in, in my, in my research into this, I, I have come up with an even better way to save money down there.
I think I know where you're going with this.
You, okay. Well, I think that the Boca del Canyon restroom needs to be painted, have some minor plumbing, some electrical, and some wood work done on it, and have the roof checked and be done with it, because this, the costs for these things are out of control for restrooms that are not used very heavily. This, and in checking with my local ADA friend, a wheelchair-bound person can't get down here unless, unless there, you take extraordinary steps. You just can't make it down there. There, it's useful at the base of the pier, but not here. So, I'm going to be, I'm going to be in favor of doing the absolute, the clean-up, paint-up, and fix-up part of this, and not the tear, tear down and rebuild.
Was that the end of her report?
Yes, she stepped away. Now, to Bob's point, real quick, Bill, it seems to me, did we actually do a report to see if we were required to have ADA compliance at these locations? Because I, I for one am in favor of that, but like Bob alluded to, it's very difficult to get down there for any able-bodied person, let alone somebody who has disabilities.
Well, in theory, the trail is ADA accessible now.
That's a great theory.
The city does have an implementation plan for improving the situation within most, if not all, of the city facilities as far as accessibility. And these restrooms, from my understanding of talking with the person in charge of this, these restrooms are quite a ways down the priority list, so they are not anticipated, anticipated to be funded for a very long period of time.
Now, we were just handed another sheet of paper. Did somebody...
Right, I just handed that out. We were asked last week or so to provide you with a minimal project cost estimate, and this is more of what Councilmember Baker is talking about. So, talking with our consultant, we have structural repair work. If you look at the second restroom down, because we can't look at the first one there...
Okay.
It's $11,200 worth of structural repairs, another $1440 for masonry, and then we're required to do disabled access improvements of 20% of that type of work, which is another $2,500. And then we would be repairing the roof with the, a sealant, because, so we don't have problems there, and then do some finish work, paint, concrete sealer, and then some other wood and plastics work where we have damage over time that needs to be fixed. So, we're looking at a total construction of, with about $91,000 plus another 15% contingency, so we're looking at $105,000 just for construction there. That doesn't include the construction documents, which, we forgot to change that number down, which would be a lot less for a minor improvement like this. So, we're talking even about... So we're talking even about $90,000 to-
Less.
$90,000 total.
Okay.
So we're not, we're basically, we're only doing an extremely minor disabled accessibility improvement.
What does PDR stand for? PDR, what does that stand for?
That's the Project Design Report that we've been going through. We hired the company to look at both restrooms.
So you mentioned in your opening remarks, and you kind of brushed over it, but it was an important point, that if we went with what was in the staff report and amortized it over 30 years, basically, these prices are 30-year investments. With your Boca, no ADA, minimal repair work, let's call it $100,000, is that also a 30-year?
No, that's more like a seven to 10-year, plus we may be doing additional maintenance over time. But that's seven to 10 years, hopefully, before we need to do some significant work again.
Okay.
So the full repair, I mean, the full project, the one that's in the staff report-
Is a 30-year investment?
Is somewhere 20, 25, maybe 30 years, because of the environment down there is so tough. I don't know if it would last that long without some significant rehab. Those are the options that we have. And also, with the minor one, you wouldn't get the doors on the restroom stalls. So basically, we're staying with the alignment we have.
Okay. Does anybody else have any other comments? We had one speaker card on this. So if anyone else has any other comments, we'll take the speaker card. Sandra Weaver?
One comment?
Yes.
I guess the issue with flipping the restroom or the stall would be we might not have proper access to the sinks, so we'd have to look at that. But that's a detail that we could work out, and the council could go ahead and prove this, and we'll just-
Great point.
All right. Thank you.
Yep. Yep. Sandra, before you speak, let me ask Scott something. Scott, does she have to make her comments directed only at the Boca, because Bob's still here?
Yeah, for now, but then she could have another opportunity to speak on either half.
So Sandra, if you could just focus your comments on just the Boca del Canyon restrooms right now, and then if you want to speak on the other ones, you can come back after Bob leaves.
Okay, actually, my comments probably apply to both.
Well, okay. Very generic, that's fine.
First of all, good evening, council. And I am the only speaker on this, so you can see where the entrance lies. But I go to T Street Beach every day, either to watch the sunset, walk the trail. On weekends, I'm there usually from 10 o'clock in the morning until about 4:00 or 5:00 in the afternoon, depending on the weather. And I do use the restroom. I'm very pleased to hear the comments that are geared toward, "Let's save some money." But what I wanted to do tonight is just ask you to please stop and think. We have sand on the beach, yes, we still have some sand on the beach. We have water in the ocean. We have little kids, we have big kids. We have dirty feet, sandy feet, mud tracked into the restrooms. That's never going to change. People go to the beach in their swimsuit, in their shorts, they don't expect restrooms looking like the Marriott. So I'm all in favor of keeping them up-kept, the plumbing working, the whole thing, but please, stop and think, when you're thinking of spending thousands of dollars, up to a million dollars, couldn't that money be better spent, maybe on North Beach? Really? Really, we don't need high, first-class restaurants on the beach, or restrooms on the beach. I'm there every day, and they're fine. Thank you.
Thank you, Sandra. Yep, what else you got, Bill?
We also have some renderings of the two architectural styles, if you're interested in seeing them on the screen here.
Oops. How do you? This is elevations of the, the south and west elevations of the existing Boca del Canon restrooms. These are existing conditions of the east and north elevations. This would be the minimal amount of work that we could do to the Boca del Canon restroom to make it look like Spanish colonial architecture. We would add stucco, some paint, and a three-stack tile roof for the north and east elevations as well. And we failed to mention that we have taken this project to Beaches Parks and Recreation Commission, DRSC, as well as the zoning administrator, and their recommendation to council was to make the exterior elevations Spanish colonial architecture, if the council decides to move forward with that.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
This is a discussion between the council?
Yeah.
Okay. I don't see the need to go through the expense of making these Spanish colonial revival. I'm okay with the design that they are. I think I'd like to talk more about trying to do the bare bones of maybe what could be done, rather than designing these. To me, I think they need a facelift, I'm not sure, and some termite repair, of course, and roofing, but I'm not sure they need, you know, a million dollars' worth of care. So I'd rather look at that, and like the speaker said, we've been told there's no money budgeted for sidewalks in North Beach. If we could save some money somewhere, I'd like to kind of spread that around.
Is that a motion? All right, then, I'll make the motion. I'll make the motion for Boca del Canyon, that we give staff direction to follow this piece of paper that Mr. Cameron handed us, and do the restrooms this way, saving a significant amount of money.
Before we vote on that, let's have a get my button.
Mine is two.
Oh, jeez. What's going on with the speakers?
We've reached the effective life of our buttons. They're all breaking at the same time.
Are these 30-year buttons or 70-year buttons, Bill? What's going on here?
Here's something. I really like the idea of saving money on these two. I have to admit, I mean, the idea of these high-end restrooms is concerning. But I'm kind of stuck on one other element here, and that is, we are increasingly holding homeowners to higher standards of architecture and their own design of their homes, in terms of code compliance and in terms of just nice material. But these bathrooms are particularly, let's just stay in Boca del Canyon, we won't even talk about T Street, but Boca del Canyon. The homes around these areas are not going down in value anytime soon. And so we're going to have multi-multi-multi-million-dollar properties, beach views, you know, everyone that's enjoying this thing, and we're going to go low-budget on the bathrooms for the next 30 years, or 10 years, or 15 years. I have a concern about that, only because are we getting stingy in the wrong ways? You know, I mean, this is, basically, the beaches are our signature element. Would it be better for us to maybe look at cost savings in ways that aren't so obvious? You know, I guess that's kind of what I'm coming from here. It's the most photographed asset we have, and when you look at the differences between these two, well, it is, I mean, sorry, you can't avoid it. From T Street, whenever you take a picture there of the sunset, it's in every picture, because it's right there, you know?
Yep, the Boca-
But we're not talking about T Street right now. If I may remind everyone, we're talking about Boca. So I'm also, I'm really torn on this one, because I don't want to spend money unnecessarily, but are we trying to get stingy at the wrong time and the wrong place? That's where my concern lies.
Let me comment on that. First off, the tan and brown is sand-colored, so it blends nicely with the sand, you don't even notice it in photos. So that's the first comment. Secondly, as Bill mentioned, this is a seven-year fix. I think in seven years, the city's going to be financially in a much better situation. We're going to have two new commercial projects coming online. Hopefully, we won't be facing the public safety increases we've seen this year from the Sheriff's Department, and hopefully, we'll alleviate our hospital situation, we'll be seeing a large increase in our fire contract. And so we'll have the extra funds to be able to spend in an area such as this, which is so valuable to the community, Tim. So I think if we do the minimal that we can now, and maybe in five years, maybe even three years, after these projects come online, we have a larger revenue stream, we can do what's right for the community, which is the Spanish colonial revival at Boca del Canon.
So right now, we're going to do what's not right for the community? Right, I mean, is that kind of-
Well, actually, no.
I mean, I don't want to imply that, but, you know, I want-
I'm glad you brought that up, Tim, because last year, we cut a sheriff's officer, we cut public safety in the community of San Clemente.
We didn't cut the sheriff's department. We had a position that remained unfilled.
Okay, that, that's in my mind still.
Did we staff down?
Yeah, I believe we did.
No, we didn't staff down. We stayed exactly the same workforce.
We can discuss that later, I believe we did, actually. We're receiving credits.
Believe me, there's no, listen, I took, and you want to talk about-
Well, my point is, what's better for the community?
But if you want to talk about saving money in the right place, but if you want to talk about saving money in the right place, you're absolutely right.
Okay.
But the challenge with that is, is you make a one-time disbursement, and you don't have to worry about it for 30 years. These contracts are coming on an annual basis with cost increases. So let's not compare that, because that's apples and oranges, and we're going to have that fight in a few months. But what I'm saying about here is that, you know, I just don't want to be penny-wise, pound-foolish. That's all I'm saying.
Okay.
Even though we don't use the penny or the pound, you know, in that sense, I don't want to be, I know, we do have pennies, but I'm just saying that, you know, we should use some discretion here wisely. That's all I'm saying.
Okay.
It is, I mean, we're basically got multi-million dollar homes across all of these cliffs, and we're-
And all the people use, go back to the era of-
Yeah, that's true, Bob. Not all of us have luxury walking right back to our place, though.
Okay, so we have a motion by-
Even though we aren't talking about T Street.
Bob, motion by Baker, second by Ham. All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye? All opposed?
Opposed.
Passes three to two, with Doncheck and Brown opposed. Okay.
I have to recuse myself from the T Street restroom.
Get out of here, you home bathroom user that doesn't have to use the bathroom. You've never even been in those bathrooms before, Bob. What are you voting on these items for?
Okay, do we need to discuss, do you need to have another presentation for the T Street ones, or is it essentially-
I don't have to.
Okay, perfect. Yep.
Can I just mention something on T Street?
Yes, please.
In particular, because of the snack bar at the roof line, it was going to be so expensive to do Spanish colonial revival, because we were going to have to change the pitch of the roof. So I would make the same motion that Bob made, that we go with-
I'd actually like to see this site planned, because there's a scenario where we take away the snack bar completely. Just, you know, because, if I understand from the city manager, it's about an $8,000 a dollar a year revenue opportunity for some concessionaire. So maybe we don't have a snack bar? We keep the footprint, make it picnic tables, make it-
My looks the same as Tim's, I think, in that one.
That's sacred ground, I don't know.
Well, could we get the elevations up for that one?
We don't have any elevations of the concession, we do have the restroom, though.
Okay. Let's have those then.
But you're right, that was one of the things that we mentioned in our report, was whether to have consistency because of the concession stand if you did move to the Spanish style. And I did go out with our maintenance people and our building official, and we looked at it, and the roof on the concession stand is very minimally designed structurally, so we would have to upgrade it substantially in order to be able to install the tiles. So that would be a significant cost.
But it's a different freestanding.
It's a separate building, maybe.
Building, yeah.
Yeah, it's totally a separate building.
It's not part of this project, but we were looking for direction as far as the architectural style of that concession stand, based on what your direction was on the restrooms, because of the closed process.
I would like to, I understand the Band-Aid approach, but I would just like to suggest at T Street, where, you know, we invested in making the overpass look a little bit nicer than just your everyday garden variety bridge. T Street's iconic, and much like the pier, it's a real destination within the city. So I'd very much like the area where the showers and whatnot is to be something we'd be proud of and make a statement about the community, so.
You know, Laura, you bring up something that I just thought of. Is there an opportunity to, I know one of the reasons that we're looking at remodeling the structures is because to actually get a new permit to build a new structure, be timely, costly. Is there an opportunity to expand maybe the concession to add restrooms, or maybe expand the restrooms to add a concession, so that way it would more streamline the process, we could combine the two and maybe have some cost savings?
Well, actually, there is money budgeted this year to do rehabilitation of the concession stand.
In the Spanish colonial?
No.
No. But my point is, Bill, do you foresee an opportunity where we could combine the two and have a cost savings?
Nobody's looked at that, to my knowledge. No, it was never considered at all, so if that's what you're interested in, we'd have to go back and take a look at it.
My point is, you know, along the lines of a residential property, if you do an expansion of an existing property, it's much easier with the coastal commission, as opposed to building a structure from the ground up.
Right.
So, taking that approach, I mean, it would seem to me that this would be a similar scenario, where we could-
Well, I think the repairs that we're doing to Boca won't require any permits at all from the coastal commission, because we're just doing repairs and cleanup there.
Well, but if we-
If we start making substantial changes to the T Street, possibly, if we add square footage or do something that changes it, I don't know how much, but at some point, we might have to go to the coastal commission.
Well, I guess my point is, so if we went Spanish-style with the restroom, and we upgraded the concession-
Concession?
To Spanish, so it would be additional $200,000, so we're looking at $1.2 million, right?
No, because we just approved a hundred-
At least.
Wait, if you're talking both restrooms, or just one?
No, no, I'm just talking, I'm talking T Street and the concession.
T Street was $569.
Am I reading this wrong?
The T Street restroom was about-
Okay, okay, yeah, okay.
About $600,000, right?
Or $569. If you want the Spanish, it's $50,000 more.
Okay.
Yeah, $569.
Okay, that's not a big number, is it? Okay, I got you.
And then we have, I think, $150,000 to $200,000 budgeted for the concession stand this year.
And just because, this is not new news for me, we're a community of 65,000, roughly. These restrooms serve 2 million visits a year. There's no way we can get state funding for these restrooms. And the restrooms, I mean, they're for our convenience, but they're so people keep the beaches clean, is there, there's no funding mechanism from the state that recognizes how visitors serving San Clemente is? It makes me crazy.
Well, I haven't seen, other than in roadways, funding sources for rehabilitation of infrastructure. Like, we have Measure M, we receive money through there and the federal government for roads, but I'm not-
There's no assistance for coastal cities. It just doesn't pencil that a community of 65,000 bears the burden for the 2 million.
Well, if we were going to build a new restroom, add facilities, then I think there's more potential for a grant, then.
Matt, it's doors.
So, so looking at, sorry.
Go ahead.
Looking at this sheet here, we're looking at the $80,000 number, which is the sheet you handed out this evening, as opposed to the $150,000, right? Because we've cut the construction documents in the PDR out?
Well, the construction's 80, there, we'd still need to do some work on the construction documents. We haven't figured out what that is yet.
But it'd be substantially less than $20,000.
I hope so.
Okay.
And the PDR's already been spent.
Okay. Okay.
My only point is, is it's awfully strange, we're going to have 10 to 20 million-dollar homes in the next three years, looking down on bathrooms that have been given second-rate consideration. I mean, isn't it odd? Isn't that odd, that we have a community where we've got, you know, probably some of the most not visited places, and we're not providing the improvements that they seem would be appropriate?
You know, I love how these two-to-two votes always come down to when I'm mayor instead of somebody else. But, Scott, remind me again how, what happens on two-to-two votes?
Yeah, thanks for asking. I have protest, Baker's not part of the quorum, so there needs to be a majority of four.
Here's the thing, is that, is that, we've already made the vote on Boca, so I'm not going to contradict it and do one on and one on the other, I'm not going to get stuck with the two-to-two. All I'm saying is, is that it's always so tempting to say, "Well, we'll take care of it in seven to 10 years," because there's no guarantee the budget's going to be any better in seven to 10 years. We'll have the money, that we won't say in seven to 10 years, we can get another 10 years of life out of this. And, you know, we just, San Clemente is a different community when these place, when these restrooms were constructed, what, maybe 30 years ago? 40?
Yes, 30.
30, 40 years ago, we're a very different community from the original design and the original construction. We're not improving it, and that doesn't, I don't know, I just, it's funny to me. It just seems funny to me that we've got homes that literally have increased probably 100 times in value since then, and we're staying with the same construction. Not that this is the end-all, be-all, and we need to spend a million dollars to make it happen, I just, I, you know, that's where-
You know, Tim, I share your concerns, and I think if, I think if we put a timeframe on it, in three years, we're going to look at this again, and we have an opportunity to do all three of those structures at the same time, and we change over and do that, I think that's a priority that we can talk about as a council. And that way, we're not saying, "Oh, we'll just talk about it in the future," but we put a finite date on it. And we have James over here shaking his head, promising us more money in three years, anyway, so.
I guess he's going to cut, he's going to cut tons of costs.
Yeah.
And raises.
Yeah.
And I just, like, I understand your line of thinking, but I do think T Street is different than Boca. I do think T Street, it's a, less than a quarter of a mile from the pier, it's when the pier bowl fills up and the people fan out, it's T Street they hit next. It's a beach that's got, you know, national reputation, was a certain destination.
You know, that was the argument made for the pier, you know, it's iconic, it's Spanish, I know, but T Street to me is young families, surfers. The restroom does, it has its purpose. I don't think it needs to be a destination, you know, that we make it great, you know.
But it is across the street from ten million dollar homes.
It, I agree, and it's...
So, and in historical districts, no less.
Uh, it's not an overlay.
If you gotta, well, it is, because if you redo your sidewalks there, you gotta put them in red tile.
No, I know, but the beach restroom's not in the architectural...
Oh, of course it's not, it's on the beach, right?
Okay, so it's not required, but my concern is this snack bar...
She gets to be the one opposed or...
If we, if we do that...
If you do one and not the other, it looks weird. I, I, that's, and that's why I'm not gonna vote to do it, right?
So that's my concern, is that roof and everything, and if it's not built great and we're looking at maybe changing that a little bit, which you'll get to argue about, you know...
These are, I mean, I'm just, my point is, these are nineteen seventies beach restrooms.
Prison quality.
And we're not doing a thing to make them look any better.
Well, I don't particularly like the ones at Huntington Beach, you know, and they're all new, but they're little coffins, you know, so I don't, I don't like those.
That's why we didn't, we didn't...
And they're not any cleaner than ours.
Well, that's why we didn't do that. See, but, you know, I mean, I mean, my point is, is that, you know, we've, we've taken such incredible steps since these were constructed. And granted, they are just bathrooms, and you're right, we could get away with dumping a bunch of porta-potties on the beach and accomplishing the same function, right?
Hmm, I don't think that would pass Coastal Commission.
Sure, but, yeah, I mean, it's, it's...
We did it right now during the T Street construction.
So, so there is, there is a certain utilitarian aspect, and I appreciate that, I appreciate that need for, for cost savings, but that's why, that's why, I'm just saying this because I, I want it to be said, but ultimately, I, I don't want to have this inconsistent bill, we're doing one, not one.
Bill, I got a camera, Bill. Bill Cameron, I have a question for you.
Yes.
Uh, what is the cost to upgrade the snack shack up to Spanish Colonial?
We don't have...
Roughly?
Well, the original estimate, I think, was around a hundred and seventy-five thousand, and we were talking about upping that, and then if we went to the Spanish style, it wouldn't surprise me if it went another fifty, a hundred thousand, because I think it's a little bit bigger than the restrooms. But I don't have a number without...
So what was that total rough number you just gave me?
For the, you mean for the...
Concession.
Concession? It could be quarter of a million, three hundred thousand. That's just construction without the, without the extra engineering we might...
Okay, before you, without the engineering? So what's total cost, rough? I know I'm putting you on the spot here, Bill.
You are.
Yeah, you're good, you're good enough to do it, though.
Probably, no, you're really putting the pressure. Probably two fifty to three hundred fifty thousand.
Total cost?
Total cost.
Okay. Before you speak, James, my thought is, Tim and, and Lori, I agree with you in the sense that T Street is something special, it's a little more unique than the Boca one, which is a little further down the road, which is my personal beef, so, well, you know, leave that out of it.
I'd do both.
The, the point is, we just recognize the cost savings of four hundred thousand dollars by delaying the Boca restroom renovation. And so if we can commit to doing both the concession and the restroom at the same time because of the cost savings and not have, you know, a Spanish Colonial restroom right next to a nineteen eighties concession, I think that's a positive. And it fixes your sunset pictures, because now both will look beautiful.
And that's what's important, I just, yeah, but it would be hard to tell the folks in Boca that, hey, sorry, you guys, you're gonna have to wait another twenty years for you, for you get a nice, for seven years, ten years, yeah, sorry, whatever the case may be.
I, I don't think you would.
I think it's a smart proposition, but, you know, what I would, what I would say is, is that we've got, so, I'm sorry, so we've got T Street and then we've got the crossing restroom, too, right?
That's the Boca.
The, I'm sorry, no, but you have, then you have the other, I'm sorry, on the other side of the pier.
Oh, like Linda Lane, I guess.
Yeah. So, there's a lot of prob, there's, there's some significant problems here. All I'm saying is, we're a very different community than we were thirty, forty years ago, and they look like prison bathrooms. They do, they, they look like prison bathrooms.
Well, my point is, I, I think you're making a very good point, and I think you can tell Boca del Canyon, hey, listen, you know, we, we made a priority to do the pier before everybody else, and I think we can make the argument that the pier is more visitor-serving than is resident-serving. And so we put the priority on the visitors, and here we have an opportunity, which T Street is a lot of people's beach here in this community, to have a complete renovation of T Street. And we've just recognized cost savings to, to put us in a position to be able to do that. Now, James, did you have a comment you want to make after I grandstanded there?
No.
Okay.
You got it.
You're selling me on your idea, Tim. I'm not trying to sell you on mine, I mean, this is your idea, you floated it, so...
I, I know, I just, I, I hate the idea of overspending, because you know what, there's always that talking point of, I can't believe you guys spent a half million dollars on bathrooms or eight hundred thousand dollars on bathrooms.
You're talking, now you're gonna talk me out.
I know, I know. This is called talking past the clothes. All, all I'm saying is, is that, is that philosophically, I, I feel like we should have some alignment on this issue.
You just created a two-two vote, because I'm with Lori now, and he's doing the Spanish.
Yeah.
So, you just talked yourself into a two-two vote. As long as we do the concession, yeah, I think it's a great idea.
But we were talking about changing the concession, maybe.
Yeah, yeah, that's, I'm out.
I mean, there is some talk about that.
I don't want to demo the concession.
Yeah, that's craziness.
No, that's, that's a keeper.
Spanish, we have the money to do Spanish. Bill just told us it's already been budgeted, line items, done.
I do want to retract something I said.
Well, hold on, Bill needs to retract something.
Well, I was just thinking, I was not involved in the preparation of the budget for the concession, and I don't know if there was really a engineered estimate prepared for that, so if you want us to look at that, I think we should go back and do an analysis and come back to the council and tell you what that is, because I really don't feel that comfortable the more I think about it on the concession.
Well, can we postpone the T Street decision until we can get, you know, at least a bare bones assessment on...
We can do anything the council wants, it's just a matter of, we'll just lose more, a little more time, we've, which we've got.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's too late for this year, so hopefully we could get something ready next summer.
Perfect. And since we're doing that, can we, uh, leave the door open to the possibility of maybe con, joining the two buildings if there's a cost savings?
Well, if you'd like us to look at that, we do have money budgeted for the concession, we could do a study of that and bring it back to you.
So the idea would, would be incrementally taking down zones and effectively doing that improvement? So you emanate out from the pier, you do T Street, get that improved.
Yeah.
Wait a bit, take Boca down, go back to Linda Lane.
Yeah.
Is that it?
That's it, because we already did North Beach.
Oh, North Beach was already improved.
Already done.
I like it.
Okay. So, uh, I'll make a motion. A move that we direct staff to, uh, look at, uh, in more depth, the possibility of converting the snack shack to Spanish Colonial and leave open the possibility of joining the two restroom and snack shack if that's a cost savings and bringing this back to the council when reasonable.
And then the, the other part of that would be also the restroom, right? If, if it's not able to be co-joining, that we would redo the restroom also in Spanish?
Yeah, yeah, redo them both, yeah, at the same time.
Would they be colonial or be, uh, Spanish?
Yes, yes.
And as, when you come back at the not to exceed price, the concept is to redeploy the savings from Boca.
Correct.
I'll second that. Motion by Ham, second by Brown, all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye? All opposed?
No.
This is just the wacky world we live in. That's, uh, three-one with Ward opposed. I, see, Scott, you can't say that we make decisions up here because, you know, at one time Lori's opposed, and I'm opposed, and I'm in, and I'm out, and Kathy's in, she's out, you know, it's...
So there's no Vegas odds on it.
I was never in on the Spanish for this year.
Oh, you're never in?
No, because we just took the money for sidewalks and gave it back to restrooms.
Maybe not. We haven't made a decision yet.
Bob, good news, your home is now the new bath, bathroom restroom for T Street. And it's already Spanish Colonial, so that's a win-win.
Esplanade.
Uniculate.
Yeah. Corners, you're cheap, man. Can you pass me the water? Okay.
Next item is report from the interim community development director concerning a seven versus five member planning commission.
Before you preface this, can you say what the genesis of this came from? What the catalyst was for the request? Because I've had several people ask me that.
Well, it was a request by the city council, and I think it came up, actually, I don't think I was even here the night that it was discussed. It was in regard to reapportment of the position vacated from council member Ward. And then, um, I believe the discussion ensued about, you know, well, why do we have a seven member planning commission anyhow? So that's what I'm gonna talk about. As directed, we prepared a, a paper, kind of a evaluating the existing seven member planning commission, uh, concept, and compared it to some other cities. Just quick background, our current municipal code designates seven planning commissioners as the makeup, and that three of them would serve on the design review subcommittee of the planning commission. And then we also have one rep that serves on the coastal advisory committee. And from time to time, we have commissioners serve on task forces like the GPAC, as you all recall, or currently the mobile mobility task force, two members are serving on that. Planning commission's basic, you know, purview is basically all discretionary permit approvals that are assigned to them. They're a recommendation body to general plan and landies decisions to the city council, and they serve as the traffic commission, they also serve as our historic preservation board and our architectural review board. So they wear many hats. To give you some history, it wasn't always like this. When I first started at the city, we had a five-member planning commission, but then we also had two other boards. We had a traffic, uh, board, and we also had a community design commission. And there was a lot of issues back in those times with the community design commission was separate from the planning commission, not really seeing eye to eye with the planning commission. And we had a problem with kind of endless looping projects that couldn't get out of design review. And then when they got up to planning commission, there was disagreement about the whole process in the first place. So it was a, not the most efficient process. So during the recession in nineteen ninety-five, our, um, then city manager, Mike Parnas, directed a process to try and streamline, um, our review. And what we did was we ended up, well, first of all, the, the traffic board just got dissolved and didn't get reassigned, um, for a number of years. And then we took the, um, planning commission and the community design commission and we combined the two. So it went from two five-member boards into one seven-member board, and then that was when the idea or concept of design review subcommittee to the planning commission was in charge of review of historic issues and also architecture. And they act as an advisory body to the planning commission. So that's how it's working to this day. We asked, as you see on the board here, our planning interns to do a survey of six other quality of life nearby cities to kind of give an apples-to-apples comparison. So we tried to pick cities that basically have the same kinds of issues that San Clemente does in terms of, uh, historic preservation and architecture and, and traffic. Um, as you see from the survey, um, there were two cities that were five-member planning commissions, but on the flip side of that, they also have, uh, separate boards of a five-member, uh, design review and also, um, traffic, I believe, or historic preservation. So, um, then there's a number of other cities that have similar processes as ours with seven members boards. And I'd say that of all of them, I think we're among the more efficient in terms of our processing, the way it's set up. The only exception I would say would be Newport, who doesn't have an architectural review or a historic preservation review process. They handle that all in-house. Just in my overall research, and we just had a League of California Cities Planning Commission forum, just anecdotally, I talked to a number of cities. And actually, before I did this research, I was surprised that there were actually a lot of other cities in California that have seven-member planning commission boards. I thought we were unique, you know, prior to doing this research, so that was kind of good to know. But there's all, you know, all different sizes of, of planning commissions, uh, some larger cities have even larger planning commissions or multiple planning commissions. Anyway, um, just to provide some positive, positives of a five-member board, certainly you gain a certain amount of efficiency with that, there's less work for staff in preparing packets, less questions to answer because you're serving five members rather than, than seven members. You know, there's some minor cost savings, you know, we pay a, a minor salary to the planning commissioners and we pay for travel and training and some other expenses, so there's a little bit of savings there. There's also the potential, you know, assuming that we have, um, the same, uh, types of planning commissioners, the five-member board, the meetings should theoretically be a little bit shorter than a seven-member board. But if you have one big talker on the five-minute, five-member board, that could change, I suppose. Then another thing to keep in mind is, if we do reduce the planning commission to five members, then we would really have to rethink our process for design review and historic review projects because the five-member board, due to a quorum, would have to be limited to two members. And a two, two members is problematic because you could have split decisions. Some of the benefits of a seven-member commission is that we have a wider range of talents to choose from. As I mentioned, that the, you know, the planning commission wears many hats, so the more people we have on the commission, it gives us the ability to, um, pick the most qualified, uh, people to serve on whichever committees are necessary. Typically, we have some expertise in, in, in architecture or landscape architecture or other forms of design on the, uh, uh, design review subcommittee, and, uh, so I think it works out better to have more members available. There's more viewpoints when you're, um, dissecting an issue at the planning commission, so there's a, a bigger range of vetting of issues and more things identified through that process. Um, of course, as I mentioned earlier, it allows three members to serve on a subcommittee. Uh, there's also a broader division of labor because the planning commission, we keep them busy, um, especially with those eighty-eight public cranes on the general plan, and, and now with the zoning ordinance update and the LCP and a lot of other work that we're doing, the, we're definitely asked to and called upon for a lot of the numbers of projects and reviews. And then, let's see, the, the final point, oh, just a broader division of labor, so it kind of, um, spreads the wealth and, and the work that's done with a five-member board. You can have certain planning commissioners that have day jobs that just don't have the ability to lend themselves to the extra work that's sometimes necessary. So, um, with that, staff's recommendation is basically to ask you, the city council, to provide us direction on whether to maintain the seven-member planning commission, or if you're interested in going to a five-member, then you would, uh, give us direction on going back to amend the municipal code to, uh, create a five-member planning commission board. And then we'd also have to work out other issues of, like, how do we resolve, you know, And then we'd also have to work out other issues of like, how do we resolve, you know, the Design Review and Historic Preservation Review if it went to five members? Also, I'd like to mention that in your packet, we did include a letter from the Chair, Darden, from the Planning Commission, and also an email from Commissioner Jim Ruhl. And I see that they're both in the office today. If you have any questions for that.
Thanks, Jim. If it's okay with you guys, we have two speaker cards on this. The first one's Lou Avera. Lou, are you still here? There you are. And is Brenda here still?
Yeah.
You are? You're hiding from me? Oh, there you are. Okay. Hey, Lou.
Howdy, folks. How are you? I forgot to wear green tonight. I have a little green on though. Okay, let me do this quickly because time does go fast. I'm Lou Avera. I served on the -- I live in Toledo here. I served on the Planning Commission for eight years, from 2005 to 2013. I was the Chair one of those years, Vice Chair two of those years. I also was an early homeowner in Toledo. I served on the Toledo HOA Board for 12 years, being President several years in Toledo. And during the years 2004 and '05, I was the foreman of the Orange County Grand Jury here in Orange County, and during that time had occasion to work with a lot of local governments, city governments here in the county. And even since that time, I have continued to train grand jurys all over the state of California. So I'm involved actively with many counties and cities in the state of California still. The underlying principle, and I work with local governments, the underlying principle in terms of local government, I would suggest, is getting citizens involved, getting citizens involved in what we're doing. Now, what was interesting, I always noted during my time on the Planning Commission, that for a period of six years, the second six years, from '13 back to 2007, except for a short period of several months, I was the only member of the seven-member Planning Commission that lived east of Interstate 5. Every single member on the committee, on the commission, lived on the ocean side of Interstate 5. Now, except for a short time in that individual, there was a Toledo person but had to resign and was replaced. The other two years, my first two years, there was a person who lived, who was on the Planning Commission with me, who lived slightly east of Interstate 5, but certainly not back in the ranch lands. And I always noticed that, that the governing of the Planning Commission, as well as the City Council, there were very, very little input on these commissions from the ranchland areas, and I think it's probably still that way. Now, we're not a city of districts, so we don't have to do that. And you are elected by the entire population, which is fine. But I'm speaking here of just being able to involve as many folks in the city as we can. The broader the Planning Commission, the better. I think the members participate in other things. Jim Petches made a lot of good points. The members of the Planning Commission participate in the Design Review Committee, Coastal Advisory, the Traffic Task Force, and all of those other things. And I think having them work, having them as members of the Planning Commission with that and integrated into that certainly make the process smoother. We did not have any huge conflicts during my eight years. I think we worked as a group of seven. We were not stalled by that number. And so I think the bottom line here is that the bottom line is active citizens, real active citizens, participating in decisions and bringing the values, their values and the values of the city. So I am wholeheartedly in favor of maintaining the seven, both through experience and also a sense of personal values. Thank you.
Lou, great job getting through that in three minutes. That was a lot. Thank you. Brenda, and then Julia will be the last person. Great shirt, by the way.
Yeah, yeah, it's baseball season, isn't it?
I would like the American flag. That was cool.
Okay, so the short answer is we should maintain seven members of the Planning Commission, and I'm going to give you seven reasons why. Number one, we're extremely fortunate to have so many highly qualified Planning Commissioners. We have two architects. We have a computer science dude, and we have an unflappable Marine Corps test pilot retired. We have historical structures expert, to just name a few. Number two, we have a lack of complementary, full-bodied commissions to advise on transportation, mobility, Design Review, historical structures, and those commissions would be a necessity if the council seeks higher Planning Commissioner turnover or reduction in the number of Planning Commissioner positions. Number three, the costs to city staff would increase because they would be burdened by not having such breadth and depth of institutional knowledge as seven Planning Commissioner positions provide. Number four, more generally, a reduction to five sends San Clemente residents the wrong message that the opportunity for community leadership is valued less than the apparent saving of a few dollars in paper and packet preparation costs. Number five, I feel sure we would not have received the statewide Transportation Plan awards had the Planning Commission not possessed the diverse intellectual resources of seven commissioners. Number six, we are entering a rapidly changing transportation perspective, and we must take advantage of, not limit, the enviable knowledge base available to this city. And number seven, had there only been five Planning Commissioners in 2010, we would not have been able to have two Planning Commissioner reps, of which I was one, on the Traffic Task Force, which we all should always remember was the first place and the first group of people that embraced what became the statewide award-winning Transportation Plan and Bicycle Pedestrian Master Plan. So please, seven is a very good number. Thanks.
Thanks, Brenda. And Julia.
I really appreciate you hearing us all out on this issue tonight. I think you noticed that there are a number of Planning Commissioners here that feel pretty passionately about this issue, and I hope the experience that Commissioner, Councilwoman Ward and Councilwoman Duncheck have both had on the Planning Commission and on Design Review can help add something to the discussions that you all have about this issue tonight. I've outlined most of my thoughts in the letter that I provided you with, so I won't reiterate those, other than to touch on two issues. I think something that really struck me in reading Jim's report was that when you look at other cities that are our size, that have a concern with quality of life, we do a lot more with a lot less. Most of those cities have a lot more commissions, which, for one thing, is much less efficient than the way we do things here, but I think might also have an effect on the coordination of all of those efforts. By having one body look at traffic and look at design and look at coastal, you know, we are coordinating one vision when we're doing those things. The most important impact of downsizing to five, from my point of view, would be the effect that it would have on Design Review. I think the change to having Design Review be a Subcommittee as opposed to being a standalone body made a significant difference in this community in two things, and in many communities, these two things are antithetical. It improved customer service to a great degree because a lot of what we do is to help people navigate the process by giving them early input before they get everything inked and down on their plans. But the other thing that we do is we've moved the quality of development up while improving that customer service. And I think that's a pretty impressive thing that has happened in this community over the last couple of decades since that change was made. So I'm concerned that we would lose, we would compromise both of those things if we made that change. So I ask you to consider that tonight. Thank you.
Thanks, Julia. Is there a last card? Let me start it up? Yeah?
Let me start because I think this probably came from some of the comments I made when Kathy got elected and we had six on the Planning Commission, and we're trying to decide what to do with it. First off, Jim, I want to thank you very much for your excellent research into this. I thought it was very well done, and I'm really glad we went through this exercise. Very informative. I'm very glad we did this because at the time, when I was asking the question, I was unsure. Your staff report cleared it up for me. It's clear from the research that you've done that it seems like seven is the right number for this board. It just seems like they do do a lot of different functions and anyway. Thanks again, and I think seven's the right number, and that's all I got to say. But I'm glad we did it.
I also support seven enthusiastically. Depending on where we end up tonight, which I hope is at seven, I'd also like to add into the conversation that there might be an Education 101 for new Planning Commissioners and maybe even a team-building opportunity for the Planning Commissioners so that they function at their highest possible ability. We have new legal counsel. That might be an opportunity to talk about Brown Act procedures, Roberts rules, whatever it might be. But I'm hoping there's a productive next step coming out of this that we could maybe do whatever it takes to make our Planning Commission kind of a model in the state.
It's something that we've been talking about with Jim Petches and Rob Zerschmid, the interim director, along with BBK and specifically Mal Richardson, the Assistant City Attorney, who's doing the Planning Commission work. So it's something we have in the process to do an update of the Brown Act and what the best ways are for the commission to function and how we should utilize our legal team in the best interests of the city. So we'll be coming forward with that, and it's something that we'll also be discussing at the March 31 meeting that we have with all the boards and commissions.
Can I ask a question of Mobility Task Force? Are you just dealing with hotspots, or are you also dealing with complete streets, mobility, the whole package?
The answer is yes and yes. We'll be ready to come back to council, I think. What did we say? April?
We're going to have another meeting in April with the Mobility Task Force, and then we'll be coming back to the council in the first meeting of May is our target date right now.
But it's a very tactical proposal that we're putting together for council's consideration. And if the basis for your question is, do we need a Transportation Commission? We looked at that back at the formation of Traffic Task Force, and the point I think Chair Darden made, which is the coordination, all the different hats that the commissioners wear make them really high-functioning when it comes to things. Transportation and land use are almost inextricably linked. The other thing we learned back then, and I think it's even more telling here, is cities with Transportation Commissions, they don't meet that often because there's nothing to talk about. And for example, at the time, San Juan had a Transportation Commission, and they disbanded it two years ago because there just wasn't enough to justify the dialogue. So the Mobility Task Force is going to sunset. You know, it's going to do what it does, but it's very tactical.
Okay. Jim, can you come up real quick? Because one thing that I wanted to talk about, we looked at cities close to us, the quality of life and all that, and I'm not against the seven. I want to look to maybe expand it a little. Did we look at others? We need to look at other cities that have complete streets and see how they incorporated that into with their traffic, you know, commission or Planning Commission. Because I don't see a coordination of trying to get that off the ground, except for our staff, you know? And we're relying on Tom Frank and Jennifer Rosales to do that. So I just, I would like to...
The council could make that direction. The council could say to the Planning Commission, can you come forward with some agenda ideas for the next 12 months that, you know, address the requirements we've set for complete streets?
I think that's a good idea. I just, you know, we didn't look at any, there are cities up in Northern California that have, they're way far ahead than us on it, and we made this a priority in our new general plan. So I just, you know, I wanted to kind of ask how that would happen, that we would look at how other cities did that, that had a complete streets. And that's why I asked you about the Mobility Task Force, if that's going to be addressed at all.
If the council is so direct, we can definitely look at that. We would be working with, you know, Bill Cameron, his team, particularly Tom Frank, to provide a lot of input in the process.
Okay. That would be great. I mean, I would like to ask for that because I think it's a good idea. You know, it brings, we'll have other people looking in, you know, to try to get things implemented. I just want to see how others, I know Davis has been brought up to me, but I don't know what other cities. Carlsbad seems pretty progressive on that.
And I think Tom could speak to it better. I know that we are doing a number of, you know, complete street types of projects now, and there's a pretty exciting internship program, or project that's going to be starting in a month or so on the south end of town and looking at, you know, a potential road diet in that area and some different potential design possibilities that would definitely fit in with that concept. And it actually comes, the concept in itself comes from the Bicycle and Pedestrian Master Plan.
So that's going to be a focus of the interns this summer? One of the focuses?
Well, it's actually not a summer project. It's a spring project, and we are just completing the contracts for them, and I think they're starting in April.
Okay. Other than that, I don't have any, I think keeping them at seven, I think that's good. I know from being on the Planning Commission, it's a lot. And when you're asked to serve on other boards and things come up, sometimes it's a huge package. So that's not going to change whether it's seven people or five, but serving on the other boards, I think it's important to keep it at seven.
Okay. Kim, do you want to comment on this?
Yeah, that's it. I agree with that. One thing I would ask is that we may want to, I think it would be important to maybe create a loop of communications between the Planning Commission. It seems like right now we get the annual report from the Planning Commission, and for the most part, there really isn't much interaction between the council, although they review their minutes. I wouldn't mind either for the head of the Planning Commission meeting with the mayor on a continuing basis, or at least on a quarterly basis, coming up data on, you know, some of the goings-ons and some of the high-priority projects that they're listening to. You know, it doesn't hurt, and it can certainly happen during, you know, presentation section, but sometimes it feels like the only interactions we have is in our annual meeting and when we vote for new members, and that's about it. And I think that there's opportunity there for more dialogue, either to keep us updated or for a member of council to interface more.
Okay. Well, with that, I'll move that we keep, you good?
Good.
Move that we keep a seven-member Planning Commission and direct staff, if they have any ideas for better communication between the two groups, to look into those future possibilities.
Second.
Motion by Hamm, second by Hamm, all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes 5-0. Thanks, everybody, for coming out and waiting around until nine to speak about this.
And for item 9B, I don't even think we need a staff report, just a motion, perhaps?
Perfect.
Okay. So item 9B is the City Attorney Transition Plan. I move that we approve staff recommendation, which is to receive and file the administrative report dated March 17, 2015, that is on file with the city clerk and provide any comments or input on the city attorney transition plan, and that we approve and authorize the mayor to execute contract C-15-14 by and between the City of San Clemente.
I just saw it.
And Lieutenant Tucker providing for special counsel services effective March 1, 2015.
I'll second that. Motion by Duncheck, second by Hamm, all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Passes 5-0.
Welcome aboard.
I would like to make one, before we go on, I would like to make one comment about the transition plan. I really, I really liked this final sentence in here. "We understand this transition plan will be organic and look forward to reviewing it with you in the near future. We welcome your input in the meantime." So I think those are very important words there, and I'm glad they're included. Scott, thank you.
Thanks for met that. Thank you, Mayor.
Yeah. You know, it's funny, we just, the city manager pointed out, commissions and committees is the number-one thing on reports. Yeah. So maybe that's an opportunity there where we have maybe staff give a presentation. Yeah. James, do you have any comments?
Staff will communicate with the commissions and committees, and we'll come up with some ideas for better communications. So we'll discuss that. No, I don't have anything other than if my mother is watching the city council meeting like she does. Happy birthday, Mom.
Oh. Should we sing?
No.
Okay.
No, but we do wish her happy birthday, too.
Yeah. Scott?
No, nothing doubt tonight. Thanks, Mayor.
Before we go on to item one of council members, we had some speakers this evening that talked about historic district, and if there's not opposition, I'd like to direct staff to look into historic district in North Beach and come back with just information.
I think what they asked for is to have a meeting, you and I, with Wayne.
Well, that was two separate, I heard two separate requests there. One was a meeting, and another one was a request for historic district.
I think the meeting is to initiate that. And the process. I think, I think that's what it was.
So there's no support to?
To agendize it?
Well, we have copies of that historic district report floating around somewhere, and it would be nice to dust a few of those off and take a look at them before we went any further down that road because it was extensive and, thank you.
Perfect. Okay.
And also in that meeting, when you have it, can you clarify if Wayne is speaking as a citizen or a Planning Commissioner?
I think I heard him say he was coming from the public because there was a comment made in our last city council meeting that it needed to come from the public, so he addressed that.
Great. Yeah. Yeah, I'm in the public. Okay, so number one is an update on status of the potential closure of the San Clemente campus of Saddleback Memorial. So did you guys want an update on how the three meetings went, just to reclarify?
Yeah, so that's what I wanted. I wanted to find out what came out of those meetings. There's also been talk about a standalone emergency room, the timing and possibility of that. And then also, as a council, what role we have in all of this, and maybe clearly define that other than influencers, what we're supposed to be doing here.
Well, so I can sum it up briefly, I hope. We had three public hearings, meetings with the board that we selected as a council. And what we got from that essentially was what we brought in terms of a resolution to the city council, and that's why the board, minus Memorial Care's representative, recommended that action, and that's the action that the council took. Some of the things that we heard from the majority of the board were that they were opposed to the closure of the hospital, and one of the key points that Memorial Care kept reiterating was their encouragement for the new project coming onboard. So they were trying to focus more on the new project and less about the closure of the hospital, and the board as a whole, as a majority, was focusing more on the closure of the hospital. So there was really a difference in what the focus was going to be drawn towards. So...
So the ordinance was an outcome, really, of those groups. That was the takeaway from that. That was the, excuse me, the resolution, pardon me, the ordinance is, so the resolution was the outcome of those three meetings, which we voted on, and it was unanimous.
And part of the thing that we voted on, and which Memorial Care's representatives agreed upon, was the two actions to go forward to the state senate to try to get some changes at the state level so we can have potentially standalone ER or transport of paramedic patients via ambulance to that type of facility. So that was something that we all agreed upon, which we also included in the resolution as a city council.
Okay. And so, well, and then I guess here from members of the public, but ultimately, was there any next steps on the conclusion of those meetings? Either reconvene that panel to revisit as to how, for example, we passed a resolution, we want an expectation, who's tracking and what's going to come back? Is city staff going to be reporting back to us what the progress is? And effectively, what are we looking at going forward to help measure progress and see what we're taking?
So one of the things is, Bill... So, one of the things is, Bill Bro and Pat Bates, obviously, are moving forward with those resolutions at the state to try to gain some traction. They are in communication with Eric and myself. Eric was, I think, the city staff representative. And so, they're moving forward with that. I have been in discussions with them, trying to assist in any way possible. And Memorial Care has been present in those discussions to try to move that along. I don't think they're as hopeful as we are in that pursuit, but they have been helpful in that matter. So, that's where we're at. We haven't really looked at doing additional meetings. If something new pops on the radar, then we can potentially agendize new meetings. But that hasn't been discussed. James, did you want to make a comment tonight on something I've missed? Anything I've missed?
No, I think you've pretty much covered it. Staff continues to look at other options as far as zoning is concerned for the site up off of La Pata. And I think the city attorney can speak a little bit more authoritatively on that. Councilmember Brown made a comment about what the position of the council is, what the council can actually do. I think that's another question that the city attorney can answer. But we are continuing to look at the zoning issue up there and how Measure V affects the zoning. So, I'll turn it over to the city attorney to discuss that.
Yeah, Mayor and council, we looked at a couple issues. One, quite briefly, and that effort continues, and that's to look at the existing site and the realm of possibilities for zoning or re-characterizing permitted uses there. The overarching cautionary note is that we want to make sure that we don't leave zoning, that we don't spot zone, that we don't leave zoning on a site that we know creates, leaves no economic, economical, economically viable use of that site. So, we'll look at that as the council considers how to update that part of your general plan and zoning ordinance. As regarding the La Pata site, we've had just a lot of help from planning staff scrambling to help us with maps and overlays and all the layers of onion that apply to land use characterizations on that site. But the question posed to us was whether Measure V required that any use of that property, re-characterization of that property for hospital uses would require a vote of the electorate, a vote of the public. With help from planning staff, we came to this conclusion that when Measure V was adopted, it locked in on the city's existing inventory of open space areas and put that inventory in a lockbox, so to speak, as it existed in 2008. Specifically, Measure V protects properties within the city and the city's sphere of influence located within one or more of the designated general plan open space classifications or specific plan open space areas as of the date this ordinance becomes effective. So, if a property was characterized as open space then, it's in the Measure V lockbox. If it becomes open space later, it's subject to the council's discretion to decide whether to re-characterize that open space, in this case, potential for hospital uses, but that authority rests with the council. Of course, the council could decide to refer that question to the public, but Measure V doesn't require it. This property, as near as we can tell, in 2008, had the same designation in the general plan as it did in the Forrester Ranch specific plan. And it was characterized as Sector P public use. Those uses, the permitted uses in that sector included educational institutions, colleges, universities, parks in open space, community recreation centers, public and semi-public facilities such as libraries, museums, research centers, a golf course, and governmental offices. So, the short answer is that in 2008, your general plan and that specific plan contemplated those urban uses that really didn't put it in the open space lockbox. So, I don't know today if that list of uses contemplated hospitals. My tentative opinion is that not really, but it would be up to the council through a general plan amendment and a specific plan amendment to re-characterize those permitted uses to include hospitals, and that would not be subject to a mandatory vote under Measure V. I'll say it again, the council could submit that to the public in a referendum, but it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be required.
So, you'd be amending the specific plan of Forrester Ranch only for that use, and it wouldn't affect any of these other zoning outside of Forrester Ranch and City of San Clemente?
That's right. That would be possible.
And at one point, the conversation was, and I think it was just pulled out of the air, 10 acres. How large is the parcel that you're referring to in that discussion?
Can you, I don't know if Bill's still here. Yeah, I'm sorry, Councilmember Doncic, I don't know what the extent of the city's ownership is there.
I would be curious to know that as a follow-up, because at one point, what I thought we were talking about was carving out 10 acres, and we just pulled that number out of the air because that seemed reasonable.
Yeah, that zone is pretty large. I don't know what the acreage, but that P zone is...
Basically, we'd be zoning the whole zone, though, rather than just taking a piece of it. Yeah.
Potentially, yeah.
Before we move on, I have a, I got a question about the, was there some, there was talk about a feasibility study. Did anybody ever, did we ever get one of those, or did Pat Bates ever get one of those, or did we ever see any documents about that?
As far as a feasibility study for our site?
No, no, sorry. I've transitioned from that site. I'm transitioned from that site back to the hospital ideas. They were, Memorial Care was doing a feasibility study, and I...
I think that's a question we could ask in Memorial Care. I think there's representatives here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Maybe we should hear the cards.
Okay.
Do we have cards?
Yeah, we have a bunch of cards. So, we have a bunch of cards this evening to hear on this topic. And I'm going to request that everybody remain respectful of the three-minute timer. And so, most of these names on here have had the opportunity to speak multiple times. So, if you could, please be respectful of the three minutes. And if everybody, not only can remain calm and not be boisterous or clapping for any one person, that'd be much appreciated. So, I'm going to read the list of cards here. Carol Wilson, Lynn Dossie, Mary Ann Martz, Scott Schiffman, Donna Vidreen, Warren Vidreen, Mike Clark, and Roger Julkeer. And the last card now is Steve Cullen. So, let's fire it off with Carol Wilson.
Just like to commend you all on looking into alternatives to building another hospital in our city. I think with the lack of cooperation that we've seen from Memorial Care, that they have no interest in serving our community as far as emergency care or worrying about what happens to our citizens. They're worrying about how much money they can make. So, I'm going to just applaud you again and say, I hope that you will look at other alternatives to get a hospital up here as soon as possible. If you need any help from the Dana Point area, I am happy to be an interface to Dana Point if you're going to do perhaps a hospital district in the future, or if any special grant money or any other thing could come to this to help get this alternative hospital up. I'm there for you, and any resources I have or people I know that can help this come to fruition, I'm there for you. Thank you.
Thank you, Carol. Lynn Dossie, and the following one will be Mary Ann Martz.
Good evening, Mayor Hamm and members of the city council. My name is Lynn Dossie. I have lived in Dana Point, San Clemente, or Capistrano Beach since 1987, along with my family. I've worked in healthcare for 20 years, and I'm currently employed as a general manager and vice president for a national healthcare improvement program that actually services four out of every five hospitals in the United States, as well as over 190,000 healthcare providers. I was and still am very excited to hear about the plan to modernize the San Clemente Hospital Campus. With my parents getting up in age and being active in their preventative care, and my insurer requiring that I be active in my preventative care, the outpatient pavilion provides me exactly that, access to preventative care. Traveling across the country, I have the unique position of being able to look at very many hospitals and outpatient pavilions as well, and compare them to what happens here in my own community, as well as the state of California. And I will tell you that I'm most excited about having in our community a new state-of-the-art building with an ambulatory surgery center and an advanced urgent care that I am actually willing to go to, rather than a 40-year-old hospital. To me, for my family and our community, the pavilion seems like more of what we need and will use, because so few people actually use the hospital today. I, myself, have never used the hospital, thank goodness I haven't needed to, but I would be more apt in the future to actually access the services of the pavilion that are being planned on the new campus. Reading the local news and talking to my community members or my neighbors that have red signs in their, in their yards and are wearing red T-shirts, we've noticed that, or I personally have noticed, that it doesn't seem that they actually know what's taking place. I think that the local news has misinformed them to a certain extent, and they don't understand exactly what services the hospital can provide now and what they're actually asked to be saved, because at the top of their list is the question, what about paramedic runs for heart attacks, strokes, and trauma? And the fact of the matter is that today, they have to be delivered to a facility that is designated to treat them, Laguna Hills or Mission, not San Clemente. As well, the thought permeates that better healthcare is provided in a hospital or an emergency department. More expensive care is provided in a hospital or an emergency department. And more expensive care is not necessarily better healthcare. The transformation in healthcare is upon us. It's driving patients to preventative care. It's asking you to go to take care of yourself before you actually are presented to a hospital for care, which makes the transition of this hospital to an outpatient pavilion that much more important to our community now. As the transformation of healthcare consumes the United States, it's estimated by some people that potentially 500 hospitals will close over the next five years because insurers will require that their covered populations, which are us as patients, actually present or seek outpatient ambulatory care in retail environments. I like that Memorial Care has put the needs of our community at the forefront of this impending change. The new state-of-the-art outpatient pavilion allows for proactive preventative personal health and well-being, and it gives us more types of access for more types of patients. My hope is that you all, as city council, will take the time to educate yourselves on what is happening in healthcare, what is happening with hospitals across the nation, what preventative population health is, and where insurers are directing it to be delivered.
Thank you.
After you're more informed, one last sentence. I would hope that you'd have the opportunity to look at the location as being something that we are saving as healthcare, as opposed to saving vestiges of old healthcare, which is a hospital.
Thanks. Mary Ann Martz, following Mary Ann will be Scott Schiffman, and then Donna Vidreen.
Good evening, city council. My name is Mary Ann Martz, and I'm a new resident of San Juan Capistrano. But before this, my husband and I were residents here of San Clemente for 34 years. Our children were born at San Clemente Hospital, graduated from San Clemente High. My husband grew up in San Clemente, and I worked at San Clemente Hospital as a registered nurse for over 20 years. So, I feel that I have a vested interest in just, you know, the future of San Clemente. Today, I'm a program coordinator for corporate community wellness at Saddleback Hospital in Laguna Hills. I'm here to share my thoughts on where healthcare is going and what I feel is best for San Clemente campus. Today's healthcare trend is providing more care in the outpatient setting. I feel San Clemente would be ahead of the curve by constructing the new state-of-the-art facility in place of the current hospital. Current building is antiquated and needs much more than just a facelift. It needs to be completely replaced, and I believe that it would be to our advantage to have something on the cutting edge in San Clemente. When I first started working at San Clemente back in 1980, it was a 100-bed hospital with nine, nine-bed ICU. Today, the ER and the outpatient services seem to be carrying the hospital. San Clemente residents are not supporting the hospital for inpatient care, and that's evident based on the low daily census. The writing is on the wall that more and more care is being provided in the outpatient setting. Even at Saddleback Laguna Hills, we treat more patients as outpatients than inpatients. When I talk to my neighbors, many are worried that they'll have to travel up the freeway an extra distance to get to the next nearest hospital. But what they don't understand is that they, if they're critically ill with something like a stroke or heart attack, they would still call 911, and they still would be dispatched to the hospital that's appropriate for their condition, which could be Mission, could be Saddleback Laguna Hills, could be another trauma center. I don't foresee anything that will change for the sickest of the patients. Today, we can stabilize a patient at San Clemente ER and use the public ambulance to transport them to a hospital that has a higher level of service that they would need. I think proposed new healthcare campus will be a highlight in our community. So, given those that I've spoken with are most concerned about emergency services, I would urge the city council of San Clemente, as well as my new residents, as the city of my new residents at San Juan Capistrano, to partner with our California legislators and who are sponsoring legislation to allow for freestanding emergency departments in San Clemente. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary Ann. Scott Schiffman, following Scott will be Donna Vidreen, and then Warren Vidreen.
My name is Scott Schiffman. I've lived in Mission Viejo for 24 years. I'm a family medicine physician, and my wife is a neonatal intensive care nurse. I began my medical practice 24 years ago and currently serve as the senior medical director of the Memorial Care Medical Group. Our group has more than 230 primary care physicians and specialty physicians, and we have seven facilities in South County alone. In 2011, we collaborated with 12 local primary care physicians who are practicing in San Clemente to form a new, stable physician group to better meet the needs of the patients in this community. This was an important step towards stabilizing the healthcare options for residents in the greater San Clemente region, no matter their insurance. The focus of Memorial Care Medical Group is to provide advanced, comprehensive, effective, efficient healthcare to 150,000 patients that we have the privilege of caring for every day. We are particularly focused on helping our patients who suffer from chronic diseases like heart failure, hypertension, and diabetes, to better manage their illness and prevent the complications that send them to the hospital for admission. Our goal is to keep our patients healthy, to promote health and healthy lifestyle, and to carefully manage those who do become sick using best-practice clinical guidelines and evidence-based medicine. We have been recognized for over 10 consecutive years as one of California's top-performing medical groups for achieving the highest overall benchmark for both quality and patient satisfaction. We increasingly refer patients to outpatient surgery centers, freestanding imaging centers, and freestanding labs, because these centers offer accessible, more convenient, lower cost, but as high-quality option for our patients. However, the most important relationship is our patients' half with our primary care physicians. We strive to be seen and felt as our patients' medical home. From the vantage point of that medical home, we can develop a strong partnership with our patients to help them navigate the healthcare system, which, as you know, can be extremely complex. It is for all these reasons that we support the proposed plan that would bring a new, modern healthcare facility to Saddleback Memorial San Clemente Campus. Recently, there have been more than 34 meetings with groups representing over 120 physicians to share the vision of the proposed San Clemente healthcare campus. Most agree that many patients leave the area for their care needs, and the majority have been overwhelmingly supportive of the new vision for an advanced outpatient healthcare center. I am pleased to dialogue and coordinate with these physician colleagues every day as we work side by side to provide the very best healthcare that the residents of this community and throughout the county so well deserve.
Thanks, Scott.
Thank you.
Donna Vidreen, then Warren, then Mike Clark.
My name is Donna Vidreen, and I live in the city of San Clemente. I would like to recognize and thank the San Clemente City Council and the work of the Save the San Clemente Hospital Group, and State Senator Pat Bates and Assemblyman Bill Bro to preserve life-saving emergency care services at our local hospital, acting on behalf of thousands of residents concerned about the hospital's future. The administrative team from Memorial Care have not been accurate in facts and statistics telling the story of what healthcare services are needed in San Clemente. Their report have only supported their proposed plan to close the hospital, tear down the existing hospital, and build an urgent care and medical offices outpatient pavilion. They have falsely reported that the residents of San Clemente and the community supports their plans to close the hospital and build their urgent care and outpatient medical office pavilion. They have falsely stated that their opposition consists of a small group of emotional San Clemente residents. State Senator Pat Bates and Assemblyman... State Senator Pat Bates and Assemblyman Bill Bro have introduced State Bill seven-eighty-seven and Assembly Bill nine-eleven to help preserve life-saving emergency care services at the San Clemente Hospital owned and operated by Memorial Care. State Bill seven-eighty-seven is intended to authorize Memorial Care to operate a standalone emergency room in San Clemente. It proposes that emergency medical services can continue to be provided to patients because of the unique circumstances reviving regarding the provision of EMS to the communities of San Clemente, Dana Point, and San Juan Capistrano. It would be so welcome to hear from Memorial Care that they are willing to work with the local and state government, the physicians and health care professionals, the police department, the paramedics, and first responders to provide emergency medical services to patients in our communities. We want to continue to protect emergency care services for our families and neighbors in San Clemente and South Orange County. San Clemente needs a hospital. We need emergency care services.
Warren, Mike Clark, and then Roger Jolker.
Hello. Last time, last month, I reported on a endeavor I've been doing for almost two months off and on, and I saw essentially a hundred percent support for the hospital, but I also saw that the largest group of people that I talked to weren't worried. They thought it was ridiculous, the idea that the hospital might close. They were confident that their government and their city government would prevent that from ever happening, so they felt no need to do anything further. So I'm also confident in you guys, and I think y'all are doing a good job. But I will I cannot dismiss the possibility that the hospital will close, and I think that it's worth worrying about. So be warned, if it does close, you're going to see some shock and some surprise from quite a few people. Now, I've checked, I tried to check other people. I'm trying to check people who don't have red shirts on and who I don't know what they think about. First of all, the hospital employees, very, very even thing. They're afraid to speak. They have been given, whether you call them vague threats or what, they've been convinced that it would be completely against their interest to speak their beliefs. The second thing is, the second thing is that there's the physicians that I've spoken to, several of them have told me, look, I can't speak on the record. I'm afraid to. And that is a pretty consistent thing. Some of them seems to have something mysterious to do with Monarch, and others, they've sold their practices to Memorial Care, so they're kind of beholden to them. I don't know what this Monarch thing is, whether it's a collusion or not, but there's some indications that make me believe there might be. That bears investigation. Anyhow, keep it up. Good luck.
Thank you, Warren. Mike Clark, and then the following Mike Clark will be Roger Jolker, and then Steve Cullen is the final card.
Good evening. I'm Mike Clark, and I'm a resident of San Clemente. I've also had the opportunity to be a part of this process for several months now, and I'd like to just take three minutes and share my thoughts. Excuse me. At this point in time, first of all, I understand Memorial Care's interest in a future as the urgent care and outpatient campus. The experts say it's the right thing to do for health systems, and to do it should be profitable, and that's all good stuff. I don't have any problems with any of that, quite frankly. It would be nice to have something like that in our community. But for me, and from what I've learned, that's really not the issue at this point. I've yet to see a hospital report that concludes that the health and safety of a community like San Clemente improves if you eliminate its emergency department and its acute care hospital, and subsequently increases its emergency medical transport time. I mean, those are the issues from my perspective. I also understand Memorial's sometimes cavalier attitude regarding the facts, when the facts get in the way of the hypothesis. Probably done that a few times myself. But the facts can't be disregarded, and here are six simple facts, as I understand them right now. Number one, Memorial Care signed on a number of years ago to improve the health and safety of San Clemente and its neighboring cities. Number two, the best possible health and safety of our communities is still our primary goal. Nothing's changed. Closing the hospital and the emergency department will have a negative impact on the health and safety of residents of San Clemente, Dana Point, and San Juan Capistrano, and we look to reports to validate that. Mortality will increase in each of these cities. And finally, number six, oh, number, excuse me, I'm still on, number five, emergency medical transport times and costs will increase if the hospital and ED close. And then finally, number six, and contrary to Memorial Care's suggestion that they're being asked to lower standards of care by keeping the hospital and the emergency department open, I don't think anybody's asking them for that. What we're asking is that they live up to our original partnership agreement, use their resources to improve the health and safety of our community by making the hospital and emergency department even better. Absent that, and I'm finished, absent that, I don't think we need Memorial Care in the outpatient facility. I mean, it's kind of like the needs hierarchy, and, you know, the foundation level of that needs hierarchy, from my perspective, is saving lives, treating the critically ill, and the critically injured, and that's the must-have at this point. So, thank you.
Roger Jolker, Steve Cullen.
Good evening, Mayor Hamm, council members. Kind of interesting way to spend St. Patrick's Day. First of all, kudos to all of you for the foresight to look at alternative sites for a hospital if needed. That shows great leadership. Congratulations. My name is Roger Jolker. I'm a senior, and I'm really trying to find out why the push to close the hospital and what is really going on. As a 501(c) non-for-profit hospital, they publish every year an annual report and plan for their community benefit every fiscal year. In the two thousand and twelve annual plan, they state between two thousand and two thousand and ten, Saddleback Memorial, San Clemente, senior population grew by thirty-six percent. Per Memorial Care statement, and I quote, "As the senior population increases in size, there will be a greater need for caregiving service and health services," unquote. In two thousand and twelve, Memorial Care broke out the analysis by Laguna Hills campus and the San Clemente campus. In two thousand and twelve, over sixteen million dollars of their community benefit was unpaid costs of Medicare. In two thousand and thirteen, the amount was nineteen million. Unfortunately, or perhaps by design or intentionally, the two thousand and thirteen fiscal report did not break out by campus. There was no longer a mention of the San Clemente campus. Remember, this is two thousand and thirteen, two years ago, and the San Clemente campus had already been deleted from their information. Do you think they have made they may have decided two years ago to close the hospital and just got around to telling you last year? Close the hospital and their community benefit is likely to go down. Looks like the closure is all about money and always has been. In conclusion, I would ask the city council to have a meeting with the attorney general and their staff about and relating to the 501(c) status of Memorial Care.
Thank you. Earlier today, McKenna Brownell was here from San Clemente High School, pointing out that the dance team is going to the national championships this weekend, and I would point out that one of the members of that dance team, Gabrielle Cullen, will go as the state champion for California. Last week-
Pass or no applause, please.
At Tustin High School, forty-five schools from California sent their two best soloists to compete, and Gabby won, so she will represent this city and this council at the nationals as the state champion. I haven't met her personally, but I imagine she's a magnificent dancer. Anyway, you know, we keep talking about the same stuff. Memorial Care will tell you that emergencies aren't handled at San Clemente, and will tell you that most emergencies are not heart attacks and strokes. They will tell you that we are a vocal minority, and we will point out that now our number of signatures has passed nine thousand, along with a thousand of these shirts that are walking around and more than twelve-hundred yard signs, and we have to make more because we keep getting requests for them. They will tell you that there's only one inpatient surgery, and will point out that with that and the outpatient surgeries that they do, they still do fourteen to fifteen hundred a year, and they get paid for every one of them. So we keep going back and forth, and the only thing that I'll point out to maybe break the tie, if that's the right phrase, is that everybody who comes up here for Memorial Care gets a paycheck from Memorial Care. All the people who agree with the plan, all the physicians who are wholeheartedly behind it are Memorial Care employees, and really, what choice do they have? And the people that oppose this are residents. We have no financial incentive to be here. We're not paid to be here. We're here because we think this is a huge disservice to our community. I want to say thank you to everybody here for having the discussion about the land at La Pata. I think that kind of attitude is exactly what's necessary as this vote is upon us. They're supposed to vote on the twenty-fourth of this month to close the hospital, and they may vote to do so with the idea that they're going to close it in November to wait for legislation, to see if that legislation sees its day. I think that Memorial Care figures that that legislation will not pass, and then they'll be able to say, well, we tried our best, and that's it. I think that if Memorial Care abandons the city, simply moving on is not enough. I think that this committee should not, or this council shouldn't approve their new building. I mentioned it at the last meeting that there's no need for a new office building on that street. There are seven buildings with vacancies. On top of that, I think that if you're going to discuss rezoning, I think that you should consider that the hospital could be that the seven acres the hospital sits on should be zoned for acute medical use only. I know that's referred to as spot zoning, but this committee has the authority to do that. This council has the authority to do that, and if you're not sure if you do, put it to a vote in the city. Ask the city if they think you guys should do that. And lastly, I do believe that this council should question the nonprofit status. If they're not going to be an organization that benefits San Clemente, why should they get tax breaks for it? Thanks.
Thanks, Steve. Our last card is Adam Franklin.
Good evening. My name's Adam Franklin. I married into a family that's been here for thirty years. I've been in town for close to ten. I'm a dad who has kids that have used the emergency department, and I'm also an orthopedic surgeon who sees kids in the emergency department at San Clemente Hospital all the time, and I think that it's a shame to have the people of this community have to go to another community to receive the care that they deserve and that they should have here. The patients that have strokes and heart attacks can be stabilized and passed on up to the places that can take care of them definitively, but there's a lot of other things that can happen, children choking, children drowning, anyone drowning, and to have an emergency facility close by, especially in summer months when things are a lot busier, is going to be really important, and it still saves lives. So I would encourage you to think about not necessarily just the stroke patients that don't end up coming to our hospital, but everybody else that does, and I think it's huge disservice to take away care, and I don't think that they're really going to be adding a whole lot that isn't already available that you need. So that's it.
Thank you, Adam.
Tim, do you have a question?
I do. Scott, could you speak a little bit about the designation of an acute care facility? If that's, obviously, would be, as he, as the doctor mentioned, it would be spot zoning, but is there precedent for that, or is there something in our current zoning code that allows that designation?
I'd have to look at those latter two questions, Mayor and council. The reference to spot zoning is if you permit a really, really narrow array of uses on a site, and the city does that knowing that there isn't a reasonable rate of return on those uses, then that's a spot, a spot zone. The quintessential example is when a city designates land for use as a hotel, and that's the only permitted use, and there's evidence in the record that a hotel, that that designation renders the property valueless. That's, I have no idea whether the acute medical care designation would do that. We don't have that kind of information before you, but I'd be happy to look at what that zone is, whether other cities have it, and including this city, and what that might mean.
Just for clarification purposes, Scott, the, you can, you're only allowed to make that change in zoning if it's tied to an economic trigger? There is no other triggers?
There has to be some reasonable economic return on investment with your designation.
That's the only requirement you have to meet.
Yeah. Doesn't mean you have to make a lot of money. Doesn't even mean that you have to make money. It just means that there's some reasonable use to the property. And there's, we can provide you more information on that.
I would like to.
There's a set of factors that you have to consider.
Does that recognize existing uses as well? If it's been, if it's been an existing use for a period of time, and it's shown either profitable or non-profitability, then that would be play into that designation?
Yes, that's one of the considerations. The Supreme Court uses the term investment-backed expectation, and then there are some sub-considerations to what's an investment-backed expectation, but it's generally what you thought was going to happen when you bought the land. This land has been in the same hands for a long time. You know, we'd have to look at kind of chain of title and what you might have expected reasonably when you bought that, if we were to affect a town zoning.
Okay.
I have one more question, but I forgot it. Sorry.
Well, Tim's thinking about a question, you know, if there's support for it, I'd like to direct staff to take a look further into exactly what Scott's been discussing. Anybody opposed to that?
That's good.
Okay. James?
Morning.
Okay.
And I would like to agendize, request that Saddleback attend our first meeting in April because this March twenty-fourth decision, it sounds like that's a board meeting, and it would be appropriate for the city to learn what decisions were made and what timetables were decided on. And also, if possible, to have a calendar of how that legislation is moving through the system in Sacramento, what the key milestones are, when the sessions are, what, you know.
I was gonna, I was gonna say the exact same thing. As a matter of fact, I don't know if it would be on board, but potentially, the city could look at, with the other cities, potentially engaging with either legislative consultant or lobbyist that would be able to assist in that. I would be interested in maybe taking an extra bit of effort in tracking that legislation, getting folks behind it, pushing it through, and that may take a little bit more than just a simple representative and his staff. So I wonder if that may also be an option.
At least can we price it out and see what it would cost to get a lobbyist?
I imagine this, there's tremendous amount of precedent for this type of request, but we should track it at the very least, and-
I think we can, I think we can track it with the legislators, both the legislators' staffs. They've been very receptive and very open and very helpful, so-
Agreed, then maybe just ensuring we're all on the same page.
I was gonna comment to that point, is I've been in discussion with Bill Bro's staff, and when I have some concrete information, I'll bring it back under council.
And I would, I would maybe ask the question, would there be any utility to, you know, the cities banding together and having a firm or some assistance outside of their staff to help, you know, get this through? I mean, I, you know, here's the thing, if this truly has significant economic impact and health impact, then it may be worth our investment as a city into helping it move along even quicker. So I think that's a question-
I think that's a terrific idea, and if we could at least get a price tag, because, you know, it sounds like there's union and there's, we're not content experts on this industry, so having somebody who can help us navigate through and be a voice besides the unions or be a voice beside-
Or at least a realistic appraisal of our chances. Or at least a realistic appraisal of our chances and what we could potentially see. Because what I don't want to hear is, hey, we're pursuing this, we may have a good resolution. Two and a half years later, nothing has happened, and it dies in committee.
Yeah.
And so maybe somebody can give us a little bit of unvarnished truth, as opposed to, you know, wouldn't that be nice?
Yeah.
Wouldn't that be nice?
Boy, I got a whole list of things I'd love to ask for also while we're doing-
Does anyone know what unvarnished truth talent that I could be in touch with? But I, you know, if anything, we'd like to get a third-party opinion as to the realistic chances of that being successful. And so I, you know, not that we have money growing on trees, but frankly, with Dana Point and San Juan Capistrano, I think we could probably band together.
Dana Point has money growing on trees, by the way.
They do. They have a money tree in the harbor.
Yeah.
And so-
Before we move on from this topic, James, if Memorial Care is going to give an update, can you put it under special presentation, so it's the beginning of the meeting and so the end?
That's good.
Okay. Great. Okay. Kathy?
I don't need that slide yet. No, I'll tell you when. Okay. I'm sorry. I was asked to give an update-
Oh, yeah. Before, yeah, thank you, everybody, for sticking around until the end of the meeting, ten o'clock at night. I know it's very late on a Tuesday. So now, guys, can all go down to Molly Bloom's and have a beer.
Green one.
We'll see you there. Sorry, Kathy, please.
That's okay. I was asked to give an update on the Tesoro extension, the toll road, and I thought I would just give a brief description of it. It's a five-point-five-mile extension of the two forty-one toll road.
Hang on for one second.
Is it two?
Folks, if you could, please, when you're outside, hold it down a little bit. We've still got a little bit more business to conduct here. Thank you very much.
Okay. The extension of the toll road we're talking about is a five-point-five-mile extension of the two forty-one toll road that presently ends at Oso Parkway. The proposed extension is to end at Cowcamp Road in San Juan Capistrano. Back in August of 2012, the TCA applied for a waste discharge permit from the San Diego Water Board, which the Board denied their waste discharge requirements in June of 2013. TCA appealed that decision to the State Water Quality Control Board, stating that the San Diego Board did not give clear legal findings for the denial. The State Board remanded the matter back to the San Diego Board with the direction to provide the factual and legal basis for the San Diego Board's decision. That hearing was held yesterday, March sixteenth, and the San Diego Board issued a tentative resolution supporting denial before yesterday's meeting, but a hearing was held for public comments and to allow TCA to speak. So ahead of time, they put out a resolution for submitting denial of that, supporting denial. The San Diego Board voted to affirm their resolution yesterday, supporting denial for the waste discharge requirements for the Foothill Eastern Transportation Corridor Agency Tesoro Extension with a vote of six-zero, which before the vote was four-six. No, I'm sorry, four-two. I was adding it up wrong. And the two members of the Board this time actually thanked the TCA for appealing the decision, because maybe it wasn't quite clear, but they came out with a resolution that issued thirty-three points, and they said now we totally are changing our vote to-
Unanimous.
Yeah, unanimous vote. So it is now up to the TCA on what their action will be. Last Thursday, we had a TCA Board meeting, and they said their intent, if the state, if the San Diego Board went through with this, that they were going to appeal it back to the State Board again, saying that they still don't feel that the findings the San Diego Board had were actual what the state told them to do. So the San Diego Board, I watched the meeting yesterday. It was quite long, and the one thing that they said is they thanked the TCA for actually appealing this, because it was more clear, and that they were confident that their legal counsel had handled everything properly and that it would stand up. So that was the end of that. So they're going to appeal it.
I have a side question. Is Cowcamp Road going to be one-way or two-ways? Do you know, two directions?
I believe it's two.
It's two?
Yeah. Thank you. I do believe that. I was trying to picture-
So are they going to try and bifurcate the extension of Cowcamp and then try and get that through, or are they just going to appeal the entire body of, because my understanding was this was, this was rejected because they went for not only to Cowcamp, but the extension, the whole caboodle?
No, they didn't go for it. What happened is, in their tentative resolutions going back and forth in 2013, they tied it to a document that the TCA said this was part of the SOC TIIP project.
Aha.
Which is, I only know it as, I don't know.
That sounds like everything.
Okay. It was everything. So TCA even said it was part of this, the EIR and what they were doing, the discharge requirements were part of this project. So the Board said, well, if it's part of that project, it's the whole thing.
So they-
And they said that they can deny it, they can deny that this increment, they believed it was incremental approach to the whole toll road. And they have a-
So the denial-
Was based on that.
Okay. So that was, that was what my question was, because the Cowcamp Road extension, they basically extrapolated, well, you're including all the other segments and everything in it, and so we're denying it in toto instead of that, you haven't been specific enough, and so we're-
And you have not said what the, you haven't included all the other findings, you know, all the other environmental part of taking it, you know, through Tressles to San Antonio Free. So that, if you read in this, it says the EIR's for that, it's, they're unmitigable. We cannot mitigate the impacts.
Right. But most of their references, I read that report, most of their references were in that, in the final phase alignment where it connected through Tressles.
It was. It totally was, but-
They didn't, I didn't notice any comments about the extension now to Cowcamp at all.
Uh, no, and that might be what TCA is saying, but there is a, they think they have that authority granted by the Porter-Cologne Water Quality Control Act, which is telling them that because of that, they can take, if they think a project has, you're only asking for part of the project, but the bigger project has impacts that, you know, are going to affect it in, you know, the long run. They think they can take that into consideration and deny the entire thing. So based on that act is what they said that they're going to deny it. So that's where it stands, and TCA said they're going to, at least on Thursday. They hadn't gone to the meeting yet, the hearing yet, but they said they're going to appeal it. But I have other news, and Laura's not here. Do you have the slide? No?
Before we move on from that topic, I want to make a comment on that, and Lori's going to hate me for this, but if you can extend the invitation to CEO of the TCA, if he enjoys going round and round on merry-go-rounds, he's welcome to come to San Clemente during our fair, and I will pay for a ride to go on the merry-go-round together, since he enjoys it so much. And we can just do that as many times as he would like.
Well, he is new.
So please extend my invitation.
He's, he was hired this past year, only a few months ago. So he didn't look very happy. They were the three unhappiest people in that boardroom, and everyone else was very happy.
This is actually a good project.
Okay. So this is something new that I wanted to tell this council and the public about.
Whose graphic is this, by the way?
This is TCA's graphic.
TCA's graphic. So more money, we threw at nothing. Fantastic.
Well, actually, Caltrans is behind this one, too.
Oh, damn it. Well, it's another one.
This one might actually make the toll, right. Okay. Caltrans, in cooperation with the Transportation Corridor Agency, issued a public notice that they are doing preparation for a supplemental draft EIR for what they are calling the SR, the two forty-one ninety-one connection. Because as you know, when you try to take the two forty-one and go eastbound on the ninety-one, you are backed up. So they're calling it the median-to median connector between the two forty-one and the ninety-one. And if you notice on this graphic, there is a middle lane that is being added. You have to picture, you're going, you're going east on this. You're coming down into Corona, down the hill. And they're adding to the middle, they're adding a median, and it's going to connect to the express lanes of the ninety-one. It will be a toll, you will toll, you'll pay a toll, but I can tell you, if you've sat in that line, and how dangerous all the cars are trying to jockey around to get ahead of the hundred cars, you know, in front of them, this actually might get people using the two forty-one more. They might actually get more, more usage with this. It's, I think they said it's like a hundred and twenty million dollar project, but it sure seems like it would be more than that. It is just for connecting these two. But, you know, as you know, the TCA is having trouble because they don't get enough ridership. And one of the things that, this was supposed to have been done, it was already approved in nineteen ninety-four, and they did not do it. They decided to shortcut it, and the road doesn't work well. So-
So with this hundred and twenty million dollar addition, when are we going to refinance until this time? Will it be seventy this time when we get it free, or eighty? What's the, is there an outlook for this?
The current-
I'm not going to live long to see it be free, am I? My grandkids may be.
So that is a new project, and I would rather see him work on that project-
Yeah.
That has a chance of, I think one thing that the TCA we've asked for is that they work on projects that actually generate money, you know, into the coffers. So this one's a good one.
Kathy, I appreciate your update. And the two things on my mind when you go to these board meetings, one is, I keep hearing that TCA is about ready to unveil a half-a-dozen alignments that take Cowcamp to the finish line. You know, the finish line being Tressle. So if, if you hear-
Right. They don't want to say that.
If you hear any, if you could ask, what, you know, what's the status on the alternative alignment discussion? And then the other thing I'm very curious about is if this Cowcamp piece failed, so the default is this thing called F Street, which Rancho Mission Viejo will build on that same footprint?
You're-
Yeah. And it's an arterial, arterial highway that follows the same footprint. What I don't understand, and if you're able to get clarity on it, is there's, I think what I understand is there's some sort of memorandum of understanding that at some point the toll road could then come in and take it from the ranch and make it a tolling. They would condemn it and then bring it back as a toll. So, because the ranch needs the infrastructure.
Does the ranch need the water board approval for that?
Yeah. No, I don't, well, they've got a separate permitting process. And so, but that's all I know. So if it comes up at your meetings, it's just kind of interesting.
Well, I think I'm going to have to ask, because it doesn't come up. What they do is they talk about this in committees, and until they're ready to unveil it. But I will ask.
That's great.
But you understand what the issue is?
I do.
Because you mentioned the word incrementality, and the toll road, you know, is a candidate for this kind of incremental improvement. Those are two, two things I'm curious about.
I will ask.
I gotta just say, I got a comment on this. This is fantastic. F Street, public, public roads paid for by developers is exactly what we need, not private roads born on the backs of the residents of this county. I've been saying that as long as I can remember. And I just have the biggest smile on my face right now, because I could tell you, when was the first toll road, like ninety-six, ninety-seven was when they built seventy-three? Someone told me then, the toll will come through Tressles, and there's nothing you can do about it. And then I remember hearing it again in ninety-nine, and then two thousand and one, and two thousand and three, two thousand and five, and here we are in two thousand and fifteen, and, oh, whoa, that's right. Nope, there's no toll road down Tressles. Oh, that's weird. Moving on.
So that concludes my update.
It feels really good. I can't wait till a day that they don't want to-
I think we've reached the hour for the Chris rant. I'm going to term this-
Kathy, you done? All right. I got a, I got a couple of things. I had, I had fun this morning, too. Not quite as much fun as Kathy had at the TCA meeting, or Chris is having tonight, but I had some fun this morning at a presentation that the City of San Clemente got. Would you crank that video for me, please? It's about a thirty-minute, no, no.
We're here at the city's water reclamation plant, and part of the construction here is the expansion to the city's recycle water system. We're standing here at the sand filters, and off behind me is a mimic of the existing sand filters that are under construction, and adjacent to that is the chlorine contact basin. And then you can see the pumps just behind that that are under construction as well, that will provide the distribution of the treated recycled water into the system to our customers.
How much water will you be recycling on site?
Up to five million gallons per day during peak periods. We currently have three customers, but we will be adding approximately another hundred customers into our system. This project is important to San Clemente and South Orange County. San Clemente has a couple of wells, but we're mostly reliant on imported water. So this recycle water system gives us another source of supply and reduces the amount of imported water that San Clemente needs to serve its customers. Currently, we're importing about ninety percent, and this project will reduce our imported water needs by about another eight percent.
Anyway, so we had a nice trip. Dave Rebenzendorf and I had a nice trip up to the Millennium Biltmore Hotel and received this Recycled Water Agency of the Year for Small Projects presented to the City of San Clemente by Water Reuse California at their annual conference. That's Dave, myself, and Mike Marcus, Chairman of the Orange County Water District, handing, handing us this very nice plaque. This is a big deal. This recycled water project is a great thing for the City of San Clemente. Five million gallons a day is nothing to sneeze about. That's a lot of water, so.
Did you cry like Sally Fields at the Oscars?
Now, there's some historical stuff right there in the Millennium, in the Millennium Biltmore. That is some historical stuff. Anyway, I want to congratulate Engineering and for all their great work on that, on that project. It's a tremendous project, and we're fortunate to have it here in San Clemente.
So we received a request from Assemblyman Bros' office to send, submit a letter of support for his Assembly Bill eight-three-eight, and it's regarding, and I'll give it, you know, a very high level, but it's effectively to look at recovery houses as operating under a larger umbrella and as part of a community care facility. And so it would have, I guess, greater accountability and everything that's built into that. And so he submitted a letter for our consideration. I'd like to agendize that for discussion and for us to sign off on that.
I'm in support of that.
In support of this legislative effort, because I think it has tremendous value. And there is a, for anyone who'd like to see the content of the bill, it's, just do a search for AB eight-three-eight.
Thanks for bringing it up, Tim.
And I think that's, that's it for me. I think that's it for me.
I have just one thing, and let's put the slide up there. This should be on the camera. Wait a second. Okay. So we have, one OC every year recognizes volunteers around the county that really have differentiated themselves in terms of community service. And over the years, Family Assistance Ministries and our RSVP forces have been recognized. Well, this year, Dolly Villarreal has been recognized from the city, and I just want to tell you a little bit about her. She's volunteered at the Senior Center, the Dorothy Visser Senior Center, for eleven years. She serves lunches. She's decorated the smaller senior center for eight years for special holidays. She runs a little boutique in the senior center that actually has become a kind of a serious fundraiser for the committee. And her nomination form says that she enriches the lives of so many seniors and community members, and that this was our recognition of saying a big thank you to her for her tireless efforts. So Dolly is being honored later at a luncheon in Anaheim in April, and she is Veronica's mom. So, yeah, so it's very cool. So if you see her, and if you go to her website, if you go to one OC and click on Dolly, you can actually put a message in there, congratulations to her. That's it.
Okay. I had the honor this weekend of attending a very special birthday party, and it was Max Berg's ninetieth birthday party. And that's not the park. That's the person. So here's a photo of myself with newest council member Kathy Ward, and of course Lori Doncheck. And that's Mr. Max Berg sitting right there. He is ninety years old, and if you look closely, you can see where his hand is at.
Yeah, very tightly.
Yes.
Yeah, tight hold. Yeah, I noticed that immediately.
Sometimes you get a little sugar on your birthday.
He pulled it in. He pulled it in real quick.
Sometimes it's time to take advantage of the time you have left.
Yeah. So this was at the Community Center.
It's a little frosting for the cake.
I'm sneaking, I did a little reverse action on you. So this was pretty neat for me. Maxberg Park is, I think it's one, it's one of the largest and oldest parks in the City of San Clemente, and it's been Maxberg Park as long as I can remember. And how naive of me, I just assumed Maxberg is long past away, because most people don't get parks named after them while they're still alive. Well, Mr. Max Berg here has had this park named after him for almost thirty years now. And he was a fantastic guy. I hate to say, but he was quite, quite a hoot. He did a little comedy routine when he got the microphone. it, but he was quite a hoot. He did a little comedy routine when he got the microphone. Yeah, he did a bunch of impressionations, and they were good, and he's quite lively at 90 years old. And the guy is a snazzy dresser, man. He is quite impressive. So we had a fantastic time there. His family was great, and I was just happy to be a part of it. So, that's it.
Chris, a little background, when we put new playground equipment in Maxberg Park about five years ago, Max was the first one down the slide. That was kind of fun.
It wasn't even five years ago, because I was here. It was, yeah, it was a year and a half, two years ago.
Okay.
Yeah.
Bob, when we have the Bob Baker Memorial Parking Lot, you could be the first person to park a car there, if that's okay.
Yeah.
Yeah?
Next to the Tim Brown sidewalk.
Next to the Tim Brown sidewalk, and I'll walk on the sidewalk at the same time?
Perfect. Okay, with that, I move that we adjourn to the adjourned regular meeting to be held on March 31st, 2015, at 7:00 p.m. at Wedgewood, at the municipal golf course located at 150 East Avenue to Magdalena, San Clemente, for the purpose of meeting in joint session with the city's commissions and committees. The next regular council meeting will be held on April 7, 2015, in the council chambers located at 188 Avenue Presidio, San Clemente, California. Closed session times will be considered 5:00 p.m. The regular business meeting will commence at 6:00 p.m. in honor of all the people down at Molly Bloom's this evening.
Second.
Motion by Ham, second by Baker. All in favor?
Aye.
They would start at 6?